All right, I'd like to bring this meeting of the Elkton Planning Commission to order. First item on our agenda this evening is approval of the minutes from the August meeting. Do I have a motion on the floor for approval of the minutes as written? I have a motion on second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next item is case 1548, request of Mr. Stephen Robinson representing Dr. Saman Suri for a special exception to open and operate oral surgery in Malafishville Surgeon's Office at 677 East Plasmin Highway, Suite D. Anybody in the audience presenting, please sign the paper for the records and then the floor will judge for your presentation.
My name is Stephen Robinson, I'm the owner of Alexander Village LLC. I'm here with Dr. Saman Suri, who is a oral surgeon, and we're applying for, he is asking to rent Suite D as a dog, which is the suite closest to the highway, if not the plastic highway, at Alexander Village. And we've submitted to you reasons why we think Dr. Suri should be granted a special exception under the code. Maybe you could tell, Dr. Suri's curriculum vitae and experience and personal information is attached to the application. Maybe you could tell the board a little bit about what you do, since I'm not an expert at maxo- maxillofacial surgery.
My name is Saman Suri. I'm oral, I'm a facial surgeon. I graduated in 2006 from University of Pennsylvania.
The physical?
Then I went to four year of intensive training in oral and microfacial surgery that is about jaw surgery, face surgery, and then value surgery in Suite D, and the gum area that requires surgery. I'm trained to, and I'm licensed to perform generalized PUD and IV installation in the office setting. And also went through jaw surgery training, which we are training, training two years of general surgery in the chief office. I'm going to, I received my certificate in oral and microfacial surgery in 2010 from New York.
Could you explain to the board a little bit about the current environment in the Cecil County area for oral surgeons?
The reason that I noticed this area is that my wife is a radiologist in Union Hospital. She's, she brought to my attention that there's a big need in oral surgery in this area. Then I did some investigations, and I noticed that there's no oral surgery, after my knowledge, according to the Google search, there's no oral surgery in the city. And I asked, and decided it was not. Some of the general dentists in the area, they present themselves as oral surgeons to be able to participate in these procedures. And a lot of these procedures require specialists to perform these procedures. Of course, for patient comfort, to be able to participate in procedures, it gets done more comfortably, and also provide more, and all of the test completion costs. And that's why I came to the area, giving a proper my professional opinion, and see what can be a benefit.
You currently practice in Biller?
I'm, I currently practice in Gelenbe, Maryland. And also, I'm part-time in the North East Georgia. My practice, I own this in Maryland. I notice that, earlier practice, I work for somebody that's not here.
The layout that was attached to the application, that's what we're going to build out inside of that business space?
That's the point.
All right. I know it's an assumption, but roughly how many patients do you see a day? Are you, are you the only doctor that would be doing this procedure, or you have an overstand?
I mean, I'm the only doctor for now. If we feel that we're going to get busy, or that takes time to get busy, then I might consider, but again, I personally disdain that if I have an office, I should attend myself. I prefer, especially if you're really the office, you're the person that care about other doctors that are in my department.
And I assume these procedures are a little more involved than a regular dentist one?
Absolutely.
In and out, or probably two or three a day?
They are outpatient surgery. Yes, probably would be two to three days per day. The number of the, the number of the patients per day, would be probably like, procedures would be around 10, and consultation maybe like around 15 to 20.
Very good. Gene, upon reviewing this application, does anything come to mind that we need to have a further special one, your standpoint? Anybody from the board have any questions, comments, or what is going to do it? I mean, obviously it's under research, and Stephen, that's going to be a benefit to the, to the profession of the town. Sorry, apologize. Why don't call you? Anyone from the audience have any questions, concerns, comments regarding this particular application at this point? Hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We'll be making a decision here shortly. We're going to entertain, we'll do a public hearing from five first, or you can wait to the discussion of this. Okay. Due to the extensive public hearing that we have scheduled on the agenda, the board is going to discuss the case presentation we just heard, make decision as to not hold those votes up for creation of the unit. There will be no more comments entertained at this time, this discussion being paused to board in the town. With that in mind, very professional question fulfilled out, presentation was very professional, obviously, they said they've done their homework, the need is there, the question that, by frankly, that little plaza up there runs, looks well, maintained well.
Always.
No issues. I passed it before by time today. You can tell they take pride in their ownership, and their clients take pride in what they have in that building. With that said, do I have a motion on the floor to grant a special exception for this operation, 677 East Plasmin Highway, Suite D?
So, and if any inspection reports done by the state medical be forwarded to loading inspector's office?
There is, because there's a phone and speaker in the office, there's a speech team that from the dental board that comes and evaluate, and they grant the permission to perform.
This is recommendation. All right, so I have that motion on the floor for a favorable recommendation. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Will a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, fellow.
We do have, we're going to have one more small change, we're going to jump on the agenda. Item five, public hearing, considered amendment to the town Elkton zoning ordinance regarding principal uses, Subsection 6-110 concerning indoor recreation permitted in business industrial center.
We've had some requests from several different uses that wanted to locate in a industrial park for indoor recreation, such as things gymnastics, which anyone who's had a child, grandchild, and kids knows, gymnastics gyms are held in industrial parks or business parks. And I think we had a request for someone who's looking for.
Basketball train.
Indoor basketball train, and that sort of thing. They're having trouble finding that type of a use in a commercial zone, where they found space a lot of times within industrial zones. So they're asking if we would amend the ordinance to allow, permit indoor recreation in the business industrial center.
And once again, this is a recommendation to the mayor commissioners?
You're recommending amendment to the ordinance to allow indoor recreation permitted in the business industrial center. Mayor Commissioners will then make a decision.
Is currently allowed, per gee?
It's allowed in the commercial zone, and the.
It's permitted almost all the times, except for business industrial and business park.
If BI doesn't have the only one that's not yet on?
Yeah, it's permitted everywhere else, but that.
It's the, the rally table. What's that?
That's actually business park, and I think that came in prior to this ordinance, thinking about that, and it's already a sort of set center in here. But it's, it's a UK business park.
Can you further discussion on proposal to allow indoor recreation permitted in the BI business industrial zone?
No, I'm okay.
Anyone from the audience have any questions, comments regarding this particular submission at this point in time? Okay, Gene. Hearing none. Next item we're going to have is public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, will you give a vote on it?
You want to go right to the voter, Mike, the end?
Yeah, I can vote on that now. It's a separate, it's a separate item.
Okay.
I vote, vote to.
In regards to the, I'm sorry, in regards to the indoor recreation that you put into BI zone, do I have a motion on the floor as a favorable or unfavorable recommendation?
Favorable, favorable, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion on the floor for that, do I have a second?
Second.
Director call in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have public hearing, to consider amendment to the Elkton zoning ordinance regarding plan, unit development, regulations, provisions, for the following articles. Before we get into that, we have a large crowd, and then we pass some conversations back and forth in previous meetings regards to this. This actual meeting tonight is not specific to South Fields. This meeting is about verbiage and the zoning ordinance that affects, as will be laid out here at sea. So any comments, we're certainly going to be entertaining, specific to the zoning ordinance itself, not towards South Fields, because South Fields is not specific to tonight's meeting in this town. That's what I'm laying out there, because we have, probably have many comments, please direct them towards the board, not any individuals in the room, others in this manner. If you have some questions, if that's verbiage, as you be heading up to public hearing section of this.
I'm sorry, because I had some questions about a couple of things. So you were saying we should tell you our comments, but I have things about the zoning and the water and stuff like that that's running off that they're not taking care of, so I, is that somebody else?
We're entertaining this evening, we're talking agenda, the proposed zoning ordinance changes, and these articles. Any questions specific to those, we'll certainly entertain. This is not specific to South Fields, because South Fields hasn't even submitted anything for us to review as a planning commission, correct, today, today?
Okay. I'm not sure what that means, but I guess we'll off the discussion.
If you have a question, you can certainly ask that question, and if it's not pertinent to what we're discussing here, I'll let you in.
Okay.
Not to be rude, but if we have.
Yeah, I would like to clarify, like, what are we talking about here?
Yeah, because language when South Fields does come up, the language that's presented tonight, that apply to the South Field.
It will apply to any, it's, once the PUD language is adopted by the town mayor commissioners, that will apply to any PUD, small or large, as presented to the town developer.
So it would apply to South?
Correct. And then the other property qualified as a product, small, be fifty acres, large, a hundred acres. But I mean, at this, for this exercise, we can't go, I have no engineering this board, and it would be fair to this board to try to answer questions on a project that we've never even seen. At least, we've seen the coding and the language.
Is the board aware of any project other than South Fields that would take advantage of this regulation?
Not at this time, that I'm aware of. With that said, public hearing, Gene, I'll turn over to Gene to present the public hearings. Article 11.
So, about 10 years ago, we had looked at planning development language, and we were working through it, and didn't really make a lot of progress with the planning commissions, when we were undergoing the comprehensive re-zoning for the town and adopting the branding zoning ordinance, or revised zoning ordinance and subsequent regulations. So we just had a placeholder for the PUD language until we could pour on the language and lock it separately. And, you know, there really wasn't any impetus to move forward with it, there wasn't a lot of talk about PUDs, so it's, it just sort of, the placeholder, the verb section of that ordinance was sat there for over years. Well, now there is an interest in development, planning unit developments, and now we have to adopt some language to regulate them. So, we checked in the ordinance and pulled out all the articles and sections in which the previous draft referenced PUDs, and then we modified the language, updated it. And we, we actually worked with the proposed, the owner that's, the purchaser, proposed purchaser of the property, on the, the language to see what is new and upcoming with different planning developments. So, what we've done is updated different articles and sections, and I can go through them one by one, the board, and there has been some minor changes to the actual plan development, Article 11, since the one that just posted on the website. This was as a result of some subsequent meetings that were held, discussions that were held regarding this particular ordinance. So, the first article, Article 2, basic definitions and interpretations. Part 1, definition, Section 1, definitions of basic terms. So we have, what's new and different is there's two different types of PUDs, small and large. The small PUD, it's described as development of land on a tract of at least 50 acres, but not more than 100 acres of contiguous property. Said property is to be developed with a primary focus on no less than two types of housing units, and low impact, it says low impact residential uses, it's supposed to read low impact commercial, because that's a typo. So, that, it's low impact commercial uses. Said non-residential uses shall primarily, said non-residential uses shall primarily serve residents of the small PUD. For large mixed use, planned unit development, large PUD, development of land on a tract of at least 100 acres. Said acreage does not need to be contiguous, however, it must be under single ownership on a PUD concept plan application. Shall not be separated by more than a quarter of a mile, and may not consist of more than two non-contiguous parcels of land. Said property is to be developed with a primary focus on creating a mix of residential and non-residential uses within the large PUD. Said non-residential uses shall serve primarily, shall primarily serve the residents of the regions surrounding the large PUD. Ready, questions or comments on the definitions?
I have a question, Gene. About, it says said non-residential uses shall primarily serve the residents of the region. But what, what encompasses a region, exactly?
The regions surrounding the large PUD?
Yeah, it's a region, the town of Elkton, it's in Cecil County, it's in Cecil and Harper Counties. I mean, how big does this get? Depending on someone's opinion of what the region is, that could be very limited, or very comprehensive. And I think for us to work with maybe future spittles, who knows to know what we're defining as the region.
And I think it was, just since the region surrounding the large PUD, but everybody doesn't really say within how many feet, yards, or miles, or.
Could be the whole country.
So maybe suggesting.
It's just, there are some, some definitions, just the boundaries of the region.
So define, right?
That's the problem.
Is there any type of wording you prefer, or the?
I haven't thought that one ahead. I mean, the region could be very small, it could simply be the town of Elkton, and.
Rick, when Rick looked at the non-residential uses, you can't really say that they can only employ people from Elkton. So I think what they're doing is, it's just a generic term for within driving distance, is what I would do.
I mean, it does say these non-residential uses should serve the residents of the region. So depending on what these non-residential uses are, which is often just a definition interpretation, those uses have to serve the residents of the region. So is that simply the town of Elkton, or is it greater than Elkton?
Boy, it'd have to be greater than Elkton.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, then they'd have to post a sign on their, their building.
It's right there on the border, so it's affecting Chatsworth Peak City and everybody else, so it's affecting different people besides.
Cummings or anything.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know we weren't allowed to make.
So that's my interpretation.
That, I guess, as my point, so then sort of interpretation, is that how big the region is, and see whether you should try it for some, yeah, there's a, for a boundary around, but is the.
Is the word region the wrong word? Is there areas surrounding the large block?
An area is open source of the region.
Everything, any, any boundaries?
Yeah. Unless you just call it residents of the town of Elkton.
Elkton we can do.
Yeah.
This is going to be a long night this week. I mean, I think, I, I know what I think it says, but it could be anybody who doesn't have a quick idea.
How about the Elkton area?
The reason I think it's important to say, these non-residential uses, wherever those are, are there to serve the residents of the region. So, I mean, these non-residential uses could be very limited to just the residents of the town of Elkton.
If you have a hotel or restaurants, that could be a region of the country.
Right.
I, as I, as I said, I believe I did this, to make it available. Everybody can, but it'd be self-sufficient as well. But I'm not going to do this on camera. Gene? Help me out here.
We could, make a note to come up with a definition for region if you'd like.
Yes.
Okay. Add that in another time, and add that in subsequent to the not in the ordinance.
Sure. What's hard to define, the region is, I think, when we talk about this portion of the PUD, beyond residential, you know, anything that would be commercial base or industrial base, those are all regional based, if you will, that's the definition of kind of what they do. Maybe certain types of, like industrial, something like that, that may be permitted in that zone, you know, to improve this. Those are regionally based, I mean, that's where things come from in the region, they put something here, and there's one in another region, and another region, and even things like retail school. I mean, you take a place like, say, Parkers, we all go to Christiana Mauder, Parkers, that's a regional thing, just, I mean, just a grass, even though, I, I just don't think we can put any definition on, on, on region other than its definition by, from dictionary, it just, it is a broad term, but we also have to think of where it's coming from, maybe when we use that word, a region, it could very well see things more, either way, beyond, you know, our boundaries clearly, clearly town boundaries, but even beyond our county boundaries because of commerce, because of people that come and go, people that come here and work in other places, you know, people that come to an event, to these pubs, things like that. So, I mean, that's kind of like, you know, and I also can't find region for it. That may conflict or restrict some certain things, we tend to do that.
All right, Gene, go and check on some language, and if you get us something, alternative, or, or description of a region.
I can do that, I mean, from what Mr. Muller said, I got the impression that he was satisfied with the term region.
Can we discuss that when we get to the rest of the articles, to go back to questions, or we're going to do a question, my question?
Well, we're, we can, we can. Article nine, zoning districts, part 1, section 6. Plan development districts, the intent of this floating zone is to provide for a mixture of residential uses, with certain provisions for commercial activities to serve primarily the resident population of the PUD and/or the region based on the size of the PUD. Additionally, the intent of this zone is to provide for efficient use of land to facilitate a more effective arrangement of land uses and buildings, and to encourage a creative approach to the use of land that results in better development and design than might otherwise be accomplished by the strict application of the zoning ordinance based on the underlying zoning districts. The zone is intended to be particularly pedestrian oriented, and is intended to provide ample open space in developed parks and recreational space, the benefit of the residents of the PUD, as well as the surrounding community. And then Article nine, zoning districts, part 1, section 8, 2A, planned unit development, PUD. The PUD shall be designated as a small PUD or a large PUD at the time of the floating zone approval based on the size of the area to be developed in accordance with Article 11. Comments on Article nine?
Can I ask a question, please?
We can't ask questions right now, Rose.
Just to tell us what the hell you're talking about, just go back to number three on page and.
We cannot entertain questions right now, Rose, I apologize.
I'm going to ask you a question. I won't answer your question, tell us what you're talking about.
We are discussing that right now, when questions come to your turn, keep that question written down.
Okay. Don't make me come up there, Dave.
I hear you. Right, Michael.
The floating zone is, there's two floating zones in town, PUD, lay-in development, and there's a business park floating zone.
So the PUD itself is a floating zone?
It's a floating zone, so it's a zone that you can place where you want to place it based on certain criteria. This and business parks.
Any comments or questions on article nine? Article ten is permissible uses. And the only thing that's changed here is the permissible uses table, which shows what uses would be permitted in a small PUD and a large PUD. And the uses that are shown here are consistent with, for most part, the draft permissible uses table we developed a number of years ago with the draft PUD back in 2000. So anyway, residential uses, residential uses of accessory apartments, multi-family townhouses, apartments, commercial apartments, all types of residential uses, daycare homes, daycare centers, helpings for the elderly or handicapped, boarding houses, hotels, motel or ski modifications. There are some things that we didn't include, the permissible uses table. But for most part, we included a number of uses that you would see in residential and commercial zones.
The only changes on here, the only changes are in red, the only one outside of small PUD or large PUD designation is the one we talked about earlier, is the BI from the indoor sort.
Correct, yeah, that's shown on this card. So, as you can see, not all uses we proposed to be permitted in the PUD zone. And that is consistent with previous grant we had.
Jean, under four dot zero zero zero, manufacturing, others. Yet in the large, in the large PUD, the same would be permissible, assuming this would be approved, is light manufacturing in the large PUD?
Right.
And heavy manufacturing, special exception.
The special exception.
But what, again, definition, what is light manufacturing? What is heavy manufacturing? I just want to have some sense as to what's light manufacturing. If we're gonna say that these are permissible in the PUD, or, I would agree, they have some senses to, what is light manufacturing? What is heavy manufacturing?
Ordinarily, light manufacturing would be something where everything's enclosed in the building, there's no outdoor storage of cannibals or, you know, plantable materials, it could be warehousing, it could be, you know, basic, it's a little subjective, you know, so you try to be conservative when we bring projects in, and any project comes before this board, if you feel that it falls under the heavy manufacturing, it requires a special exception. Are there any questions on permissible uses table? Did you all get a chance to take a look at it?
Couple of comments. Actually, I like thinking what you just pointed out.
We don't have that available for us? Just saying today? Might allow the as...
It was posted on our website. It was posted on my website.
Yeah, I see, Jean, that the article ten point oh, storage department, there's nothing allowed in the large or small PUD.
For just storage?
Yeah, truck terminal, storage, or anything is not allowed.
Things not related to the sale or use of those goods when they're explored, is just warehousing as opposed to shipping?
Correct.
Actually, whole site ten, I think.
Whole section is not permitted, so goods would have to be sold from that site as opposed to warehousing.
The way that permissible uses table is written, it looks like it was just for storage of items.
Storage of goods, not related to sale or use of those goods on the same lot where they're stored.
That that should have been permitted, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that it's not permitted. Unless they're sold from that same lot.
We looked at it, we didn't see that it was an issue, but this is kind of an interpretation.
I have a question on eight 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 five zero zero zero, restaurants, bars, and cafes. One of the things that the town has had some success in is to group up the town of Alpen and eight dot one, we do allow, this would allow restaurants in the small PUD and the large PUD, but it would not allow a restaurant with a brewing license in the small PUD. In the large PUD, it would be...
Permitting conditions.
Permitting conditions. Why would that not be permitted in the small or large PUD?
In the smaller PUD, I believe the idea was that it was gonna be residential and only impacted commercial. Not worry.
Why would it not just be permitted in the large PUD?
It is, oh, permitted, okay.
Yeah, just P is permitted with conditions.
We require conditions with the, that use anywhere, so there was certain conditions associated with that idea. So, the next one's article eleven, planned developments. And you have in front of you the proposed ordinance with some proposed changes. Proposed ordinance is very, was very similar, for the most part, to the draft ordinance that we considered a number of years ago. There's been, there have been some changes, I'm not gonna read the entire, a lot of pages to you, but I'll talk about the changes that were proposed and some of the high points of this, actually, yes, we should also talk about some of the proposed changes. You know, it talks about the intent of the floating zone, and procedures for approval, notice to adjacent property owners is new, that was specifically called out, that the applicant shall provide notice to all contiguous property owners no less than 10 days and no more than 30 days prior to public hearing, and shall provide the town with proof of service at least five days prior to said hearing. And then the properties have to be posted as we require all subdivisions in site plans. And then contiguous property owners have to be notified via certified mail or hand delivery of the application and the date, time, and location of the public hearings. And the same thing, if you, the PUD floating zone application is simultaneously submitted with a concept plan, all contiguous property owners have to be notified via certified mail or hand delivery. And with the concept plan, we're requiring a complete list of any and all modifications from the town ordinances that are being requested by the applicant pursuant to the section eleven of this article, and notice of the date, time, and location of any public hearings. So then, we describe the small and large PUDs, and the zones in which the PUDs are permitted to be located. We describe in more detail the small PUDs have to be under single ownership. And the condition of approval, where an application is made for PUD by an individual or individual equitable title via a fully executed real property contract, shall be all the property within the PUD, and shall proceed to convey its settlement to the applicant or to sides. No construction or rescission shall be permitted to occur onto all real property, including within the PUD's conveyed settlement. We talk about permissible uses, and we've heard them to the permissible uses table. Density and floor area ratios, we allow the residential density to be 1.25 times the number of units allowed for the underlying zoning district. And the floor area ratio has, for non-residential uses stays the same as the ordinance.
Jean, I did a question. How may I understand that? The permitted residential density of the PUD is 1.25 times the number of units allowed in the underlying zoning district?
Allowed in the underlying zoning district.
What is, what is that, what does that mean? The permitted density?
The PUD allows a slightly greater density in exchange for a better product, is what we're looking for. So, it allows a little more flexibility with density, but we expect something, a factor that then we wouldn't get with permissioned settling. So...
Jean, I have a question, scholars. Section three, A two, two home types, both the small PUD and also the large PUD.
We want to see no less than two different home types, it's supposed to be a mixture of housing. See, you have to provide at least two different types of housing. We refer to the dimensional regulations in the ordinance, or the bulk regulations, parking requirements are per the ordinance, landscaping is per the ordinance, screening above regards. Signage, we request an overall signage plan, show the signage, and also we have to comply with the ordinance, no pole signs permitted within the PUD. And then there's a new language in the red line copy that you have, under modifications. So the PUD, there's expected some flexibility with some of the development standards. So there's a, sort of a balancing act. If someone doesn't comply with the zoning ordinance, they have to go before the Board of Appeals and request a variance. In this case, the planning commission can relax some of the standards, but we wanted to make sure that the planning commission had guidance with how to, how to look at the, any requests or modifications to the ordinance with respect to development, hierarchy, all regulations of the type. So, the applicant, we asked the applicant to describe what the modifications are versus of the ordinance requires, so we can weigh that, and identify the public benefits. So, what's the call of benefit that allows some relaxation of some of our standards? What does that benefit the PUD or the town some more? And so there's a list of things, they have identified special conditions or circumstances, make sure that the modifications aren't the result of the applicant's own actions, and a lot of these criterias are very similar to what you would present if you're requesting a variance to the Board of Appeals.
So the warning, that turns over to a planning commission who would like to go over to...
With this, yeah, you would, you make the decision with respect to this, and what you're looking at is, you identify the public benefits of the modification, of the proposed modification as opposed to the development of real property pursuant to the ordinance requirements that would otherwise be full development. So, if you give a little, what do you get back, in light of benefits? And then there's procedures for the PUD. There's a PUD floating zone application, and then there's also a concept plan. And in some instances, we were told that, you know, maybe someone was admitted, but at the same time, that they're relating zone and the concept plan at the same time. So we were allowing for conditions where you wanted to do both at the same time you could, but the concept plan requires that all the items in appendix A be submitted, that's checked off for concept plan.
Does the floating zone application exist today? Do we have an application?
No. We couldn't accept an application because we don't have an ordinance for that, unless they came in with a business park, otherwise, business park is the only thing that's still So this board would then determine whether the modifications proposed in the PUD are acceptable, with the benefits that can be achieved, that can be outside of any kind of standard setting.
We get a list of, say, 20 modification requests, 18 of them are good, two of them may have an issue with, does that then become a variance request, or how does that even?
This board can deny that request.
You guys would expect the same abilities to approve of conditions were denied, and that would still be within your field, and you could do it by, they don't have to be approved in total, you know, they could be listed 20, and then you say, number five, I don't like. and I'm not going to go along with it. Then, you know, the rest of them are okay. And that's just you guys to make, um, the ultimate files. The difference is that you guys would be making the final call. We do, we're preliminary final. So that's like a lot of people.
Or you could require something additional for the developer.
Correct.
Then you can really ordinarily request a standard setting if you want. Um, so then there's the sanitary facilities. Acquiring sanitary public order and sewer systems. Uh, with the residential requirements, we wanted to make sure that there was a mixture of residential uses. And residential uses that I think we were kind of seeking um in the town. And we started out with um requiring more single-family detached. And in um looking at the different proposals for the, for a PUD, we modified that that at least sixty percent of the dwelling units have to be single-family detached or condominiums or senior housing and/or senior housing. So the things that we don't have in town that we would like to see a lot more of is the single-family detached, nice condominiums for probably retired folks, and senior housing units. We don't have a lot of that here. So, so we allow that mixture. At least fifty or sixty percent of dwelling units within the PUD has to have those, those great mixtures of that.
But Jean, let me ask you, this, this is a conflict. If we, if you go back to thirteen, it says a minimum of at least two of the following permitted houses like that list. So if I pick two of those, two of those ones listed, I could have townhouses and I could have apartments. So it's two of three.
Right, but sixty percent in that scenario, sixty percent would have to be single-family detached. And then almost forty percent could be the townhouses or apartments.
Okay, so this sixty percent.
Sixty percent is single-family detached condominiums or senior housing.
So it could not just be all townhouses and apartments?
Yeah, that's written in townhouses and apartments would be limited to forty percent.
I, I liken fourteen D. There should be no residential rental properties other than managed commercial apartments. I think that's very important.
We're running into a lot of problems with that.
In fact, I would like to see if there is a cluster of apartments that could be facilitated with a swimming pool and clubhouse to make more attractive.
So when, when the PUD comes in and you request the amenities that they're providing, you could ask that. Common open space.
Jean, I have a question for you on the, there shall be no residential rental properties other than managed commercial apartments. How would you affect that? Would there be a deep restriction?
By deep restriction? We have the deep restrictions. The, the developer has to place the deep restrictions on the property.
Jean, so that fifteen B, all open space should be designated for the use of occupants. Is occupants of the funds that say they're a commercial businesses for the PUD, employees of the commercial businesses be allowed to use the open space? Or is, when we say occupants?
If we change it to residences opposed to occupants, but if, if you work in the area and there's a walking trail, I don't think, yeah, they can't use the walking trail.
Yeah, that, that's true. I was thinking if there's a, there's a clubhouse or tennis courts. With, with employees of the commercial businesses be allowed.
And this would be, be a, be a, as opposed to the recreational facilities, which are the improved facility?
Question, Jean, does a town have an architectural review committee?
An architectural review committee?
Yeah.
I mean, it is.
It's architect, it'd be very important to have that in these funds.
An architectural review committee to the funds? I think that that would follow the different condition.
So you'd be responsible for?
As, as you read further, there's design standards, which is coming up next. So then the recreational facilities and open space requirements, we refer back to them. Okay, so there's, so you've got the common open space, which is twenty-five percent of the British State Bridge of the site. And our common open space has standards associated with that with respect to not including wetlands and steep slopes. And then of that twenty-five percent of the British State Bridge, thirty percent of that twenty-five percent has to be developed as park and recreation areas. There has to be active recreation.
Wetlands can be included in that?
No, no.
It can be.
Okay. So then the next, sixteen is architectural design standards. And this, the architectural design standards are pretty much untouched from the previous PUD language that was designed or that was um developed by a consultant of yours. There, there was a question about the architectural features, materials, and the articulation of a facade. I'm sorry, this is sixteen D1. The architectural features, materials, and the articulation of a facade of a building shall be continued on all sides, as well from, um, there was a request that it say, and directly abutting a public street. But there was a, I wasn't sure about that. So that would mean that the facade designs, um, that's only applies to the street-facing side of that structure as opposed to anything visible from the street. And I wasn't sure how this board feels about that. There was a proposal that it has to directly abut a public street as opposed to be visible from the street. The original language was that it was anything visible from the street should have the facade treatment on it. It's more expensive to build it that way, but it's a nicer looking product.
So the reason after was set back a hundred feet and had to comply with this?
If, if it was visible from the street.
Visible, right. And now it has to be right from the street.
Now it just has to, it has to abut a public street, directly abut a public street. So, um, you know, we have a lot of design standards here. Originally, the language was, was that's a name. Not directly abut. Directly abutting the street will only be within the facade.
You remember, but, but, but that say like, there's a front porch or a street. From standing on the corner house. From his outfit before the trial was done around. I just got in from those parts anywhere. Down to, well, I can see the back of that house. Technically, it has to be, I don't get it.
Did you, um, did you want front sides? Did you want front?
Front sides. Visible from the street.
Visible from the street. Front and sides visible from the street?
Yes.
That's the old language, correct?
It was visible from the street as opposed to directly abutting.
Will you vote on that?
Um, I could make the amendment, the recommendation to continue on front and sides visible from a public street. So that way the pre-urges and count it. So then it, it speaks to the facades, changing the facades. So it's not heated so often in the development. Um, varying the architectural styles and floor plans. Operating, adding patterns. Offsetting the facades of attached dwelling units and townhouses so that they, there's some, yeah, some changes to the power. So it's not a big wall. There's a requirement of, of these four architectural details in the small rest of different types of recesses and pinnies, balconies, skis, very good, covered entries. So you've got to include those in it to break it up, to make the presentation that's more interesting and, uh, kind of good. So, um, one of the items that we included in this, and at the end, at the end of the presentation, we have some correspondence from the developer where he would like some changes to the ordinance. They're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna present their comments on this. But I can just, because we go to the presented that and then we're gonna have some of these, who may say, you know, I would like to change this here and there. So, and then non-residential structures, there's designs required for them. Varyations in color, text, rechange in relief. And this is where the design comes in. So this is something that this board looks at as a, as an architectural. So then we go to seventeen, which is administrative procedures. Application for a general PUD floating zone is made by Planning Commission. And then there's uh things that have to be included in the floating zone request. The diagram showing the relation of the PUD to the town and the nature of access to the PUD. Designation of phases, percentages of each building type, number of units and location of buildings. Proposed open space, device location, uses and ownership. Provision of utilities, state account responsibilities, the cost-revenue ratio of those PUDs to the town and application fee. And then um you can also submit a concept plan directly to a general PUD floating zone request. And then this board makes recommendations to the Mayor Commissioner to approve the approval conditions or deny the active aid for the floating zone request. And then once the floating zone request is approved, then the project comes to the Planning Commission. Um, if they haven't already asked for concept plan approval, they come before the Planning Commission for concept plan approval. Then preliminary site plan approval as through the normal process. With this one, there are required elevations of the buildings. And there's a little more detail in the design that we require, but we didn't normally require from a regular um concept and preliminary. They're required to comply with the requirements set forth in Appendix A ordinance, which tells what they have to have, what they have to show on the plan. They have to, the preliminary, preliminary plan, they have to have a management statement governing the construction, operation, maintenance of the sanitary and storage stores, uh, water mains, streets, alleys, driveways, parks, parkways, that's sort of them. And um there's an option to submit a, referring to preliminary plan from the Mayor Commissioner. But preliminary plan is basically different from what the PUD should, should show. It refers to seventeen J in this article. The preliminary site plan expires after one year. If the final plan has not been submitted for review, uh, you may grant two one-year extensions upon request given good cause mentioned by the applicant. It would have to be, any standards that have changed would have to be incorporated into the, into the new plan. And then uh they come back for final. Uh, within ninety business days, a final plan in form of a final plan has to be prepared if they get final approval. This is in the normal subdivision regulations. There's provisions in here if they don't follow through with reporting the plan, if there's a delay in getting it approved or renewed. And um a bond is required just as you would with the normal subdivision five. Um, there's a provision for phasing. Um, you can, for final, the Planning Commission can grant two, two one-year extensions upon request for the final plan as long as they find a deliverer deadline. So if the preliminary or final plan is different significantly from the original general PUD floating zone, this board, if it doesn't look like what the original PUD is supposed to look like, you can take it back to the Mayor Commissioner's to approve approval conditions or disapprove for requests to change the PUD from what it was originally planned. Because we know that over time, things may change. It's drastic change. That's something that please review again.
Jean, I just, um, the, the provisions that would be in Section 11, um, the references to seventeen G, could you change to seventeen H?
Oh, okay, so it should be seventeen H.
So that's in seventeen B1, seventeen G1.
So it should, it should be the G8.
Yeah, I know, it's like it's also seventeen F7. Or I'm sorry, F8.
So we'll make sure that then um the references are correct. Because there were some changes that were made to kind of shift some of the references around. Okay, um. So, uh, the PUDs could be amended. An applicant can file amendment by requesting, filing a request for the amendment consistent with the requirements in seventeen N. Um, there's a conflict with other articles provision where the PUD would supersede others, however, not in all cases. If a PUD sign on another topic, standards set forth in the Chartering 2, zoning ordinance subdivision regulations and state and county regulations all apply, whichever is most strict. There was a, there's a section on appeals and
That's twenty B.
Pardon?
That's twenty B.
Twenty A and B, yeah.
B is why, we need to interpret that for me.
Well, there was a concern that the proposed language where it kicked back any appeals from the Planning Commission in accordance with appeals actually was not consistent with what the state would require, which is deserted for. Any, any decision of this court, I believe, is appealed deserted for. And so we wanted to make sure it's consistent with the state law on that. So at this point, we're striking appeals and just default to the normal appeals process. Or any decision from the Mayor Commissioner or from the Planning Commission to what the state requires.
That's the appeals process that's in the zoning ordinance. Majority requires appeals from the Mayor Commissioner or the Planning Commission to go to the deserted for a court.
And then um the next article, Article 12, which is the supplemental use regulations. And
All buildings and structures shall be setback a minimum of two hundred feet from a right-of-way line of any public street or adjacent property lines and...
Where, what article is that in?
Under twenty, setbacks, D, number two.
Oh, with the supplemental use? Oh, okay, yeah, we're going to discuss that.
If I didn't hear you?
We're, we're right now.
All right, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay, so supplemental use regulations describes different types of uses and a criteria for approval, and it's very consistent with what was originally planned for the original PUD language.
Why is boarding houses included in that? Section six.
Yeah. We didn't see a problem with, with Ben breakfast or country ends, boarding houses. I can take them or remove it if you don't want to.
See it scratched? Just one, boarding house.
For, for PUD?
Yeah.
Okay. So take PUD out of boarding houses and Ben breakfast? Is that more good than that? Okay. And you're right, that's probably more appropriate for like downtown.
The entire section six.
No. Oh, we didn't do the entire section six from this?
Yeah.
We didn't leave it for you.
Well, it's pretty.
Be careful.
So we'll have to change that in terms of use table.
Yes. So it describes a number of different uses. Of note is the residential structures, single-family attached, and multi-family dwellings, section twenty-eight. We again said, you know, there are four dwelling units in a row. I meant to mention that in the other section. There was a request to, to break up the townhouses a little more and make them more interesting by reducing the number of townhouse structures in a row. And so we had proposed four dwelling units in a row, so four packs of townhouses, as opposed to six or eight.
Could you define group homes for me?
Define group homes?
Mm-hmm.
So there's two different types of group homes, is a small group home and a large group home. And the small group home, which I believe has up to eight individuals living in a residential structure, is, and if they're living in a single house, you can, you really believe they're protected by a fair house net. And then the larger ones, at nine to sixteen individuals, we require a special exception as a larger group home, that you require somebody to cite with respect to privacy.
Are they primarily physically disabled or mentally challenged?
I don't know that we, I believe the only, the only criteria that we pull out separately is for a little frontal, but not, there's no distinction between mentally or physically handicapped or, or recovering alcoholics or even drug addicts, under condition, paid houses. There's, there's no difference in any of those. They're all pretty good. Up to eight units, up to eight folks in a house, it's protected by the fair house net.
And they're still constituted or occupied? Not around?
Oh, at Good Point.
Yes.
Yeah.
Same thing with boarding houses.
But it's managed. It's a, okay.
Just back, I'm going to, more than four dwelling units together. So if you have four dwelling units together, and then another four, is our requirement for the distance between those two?
I believe it's twenty five. Oh, we didn't put all those sections in here, because that's subsection twenty. Yeah, the side doors, I think fifty foot setback, and then between buildings, I think it's twenty five. Is it distance from apartments? And the fire code has a distance from apartments on the line. So, under apartments and other multi-family development residential units, two, the, two setbacks, the old language talked about buildings and structures should be setback a minimum of two hundred feet from the right-of-way of any public street or adjacent property lines in PUDs. And that's, I believe, the standard we were using for apartments, and in any other zone was fifty feet. So I think we're going to propose fifty feet, opposed to two hundred feet. That's a big distance to separate a building from the road. So if you don't mind, we're going to propose fifty feet, which is consistent with previous ones.
And that same, number one, subsection two D one, to remain the same.
I'd like to ask my question, so it's allowed? About the fifty feet?
Not yet.
Two D one is, all buildings and structures will be setback a minimum of fifty feet from the right-of-way line of any public street or adjacent property lines. Setbacks shall be exclusively devoted to landscaping in an open area and shall not be occupied by any building structure or off-street parking area. That's two D one.
Do we need to change that language?
And then two D two, currently agreed, all buildings and structures shall be setback a minimum of two hundred feet from the right-of-way line of any public street or adjacent parking lines in PUDs of twenty-five meters or more, or more. So there was PUD language in here, but it's old language here, kind of around, so that should be correct. And a minimum setback if we're going to have two principal buildings on the same line shall be twenty-five feet.
Then we come up with number three, my earlier concern about commercial apartments.
Yeah, what was your question, Tom?
I would like to see them saluted with a club house and a pool.
Commercial apartments?
Mm-hmm. Commercial apartment dwellings.
So apartments that have a commercial use.
Of a commercial use?
That's what a commercial apartment is. That's just a simple title, isn't it?
Okay, all right, all right.
That's, a commercial apartment, something that's called a commercial use. A part, right, that would be a regular apartment. It's a common thing. It's a common thing, yeah. So, Article thirteen, section nine, the schedules and regulations, just a chart that shows the general dimensional requirements. Under the PUD, we reference footnote ten, which says, the dimensional bulk regulations for individual uses in a PUD shall comply with the standards contained in Article thirteen of the Town and Village Zone Ordinance, dependent upon the proposed land use, residential, commercial, industrial, et cetera. So when you look for guidance on the minimum lot criteria with that for frontage setbacks, you look at the proposed land use, and then look at this chart, and it'll, it'll help you determine what the minimum criteria should be, and the applicant actually should provide what the ordinance is requiring, and then what they would like to provide, in a way of something, supply something different. The only minimums that we have in here that are called out specifically is twenty-five percent of the stays, and a minimum tract size of fifty or thirty percent. But this does refer back to the, our standards.
In, in, in that section, Jean, walls and fences, sheds, in, in a residential, setback for rear yard is thirty feet, correct?
Depends on where you're going. So in, in the resource protection district, it's fifty feet rear yard, also with the R1, fifty-foot rear yard setback. R2 is a forty-foot rear yard setback. R3 is forty-foot rear yard for single-family attached in duplex, thirty feet for townhouses, and then fifty foot for the apartment buildings.
Is there any way that we could impose restrictions, or could put, could be put in deep restrictions and no fences and sheds are allowed in these residential zones? Because HOA, if an HOA comes in and it goes kaput, it's not enforced. And we're, we're trying to build a nice community, and we need to make restrictions that, you know, ten years, fifteen years from now, it looks like we're made to go through the If, if, if we're going through the motions to come up with a favorable PUD, and the homes are being built for higher dollar homes, residential areas, I mean residential homes, we need, we need to protect that area somehow with restrictions. And I, I cannot see any reason for a fence, any fences or sheds in any of these zoning whatsoever.
I think that's something that the developer proposes, this project, that, this is her project, that they would explain how they're designing the project to be, you know, unique or, I mean, great amenities and that sort of thing. I think it's kind of hard to see no fences and sheds, especially in a, as a person who does not have either a fence or a shed, I wouldn't want to tell somebody else they couldn't do it, just because I see what's in my garage, so.
If you don't want to have basements, I thought, so the girl's...
Your basement, yeah.
So no basement, you're going to need a shed, which is, the girl's going to need yours.
Yeah, and actually, the tip suggested, you know, sometimes you have tax sheds to a house, that looks nice, and not sitting out in the yard or actually passing the back. I think you always have that.
I think, yeah, personally, it's coming in.
I don't think you'd think you'd take it out there.
Yeah, because any design staff, I mean, still, with the standards, single families, you think of that, you're off-size.
We're going to read our business. Right. There's not a whole lot of room left in, in, in these residential zones, or setbacks, somebody might want to put in ground pool in, to take over, if they were forty, if they were eight percent of the backyard.
If they put a pool in, they'd have to have a fence.
I know that, there's no, it's building code, but...
Well, they have dogs.
I, I see too many, too many cat house developments and residential developments that turn into junkyards because of fences, no regulations on fence control or shed control.
And that might be something we could ask, when a development comes in, to provide some sort of controls, so that the, the, the look is consistent.
And, and, and once, once this is agreed upon, the setbacks are concrete, so if, if I want to enlarge my dwelling unit, do I have to, am I allowed to put in there what I want, source, it's definitely, definitely such without permit or a variance?
I'm still wondering.
I'm still asking.
I mean, it's difficult with fences and decks and sheds, which normally the developers don't want putting those in, so it's going to be difficult for them to propose something other than deep restrictions. But they, I mean, there were changes in the zoning ordinance a couple of years ago, getting rid of decks, about how far into your setback it could go without needing a variance, so those issues were addressed. If you wanted some massive deck, you're probably going to need a variance. But to the extent that it's also been the zoning ordinance and the regulations, now you would need to commit to that. But I, I think it's going to be difficult to say that the developer's going to have to regulate fencing and decks and sheds, because they're not usually the ones that put those in.
Correct.
But they can put in deep restrictions, and so that's what we're, what would be a specific concept, preliminary or final.
Sure. So then the last section of the zoning ordinance, Article nineteen amendments, reads, zoning amendment conditions for PUD, floating zone shall be subject to the provisions of Article eleven, section eighteen of this ordinance, which is opposed back to the procedures. So that was for the, that was the draft language for the zoning ordinance. Do you want me to, Chairman, continue with the sections of the subdivision regulations that refer to a PUD, and then?
Are there two separate recommendations from the mayor commissioner, or is it just one?
There are two separate ordinances, so, and technically, I guess it would be two separate, but it's the same topic, so.
All right, let's go ahead and continue, and then we'll discuss them separately at the end.
Okay.
And I have a few questions, based on Article three and four, so.
Okay. So then, the definitions under the often subdivision regulations are the same as under the zoning ordinance. We talk about small mixed-use plan unit developments and large mixed-use planning developments. And same correction for low impact commercial, if not low impact.
New language change in there from the other.
It's the same, it's the same. And then the other, that's Article two, and then Article five, talks about general design requirements in subdivision regulations, under Article five, section seven, and the statement is, design requirements for a planned unit development shall comply with all requirements in the zoning ordinance. There's subdivision regulations, the subdivision regulations, unless Article eleven of the zoning ordinance specifically sets forth an alternate, alternate requirement for standard. So it refers back to the zoning ordinance.
All right, that ends your public hearing.
Yes, that's, this is the proposed changes for the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations with respect to the planned unit developments.
Any questions from the board, or anything to open up to the floor?
Now, we do have, we have a letter from Morris and Ritchie Associates regarding the ordinance and some proposed provisions they would like to see made. And there was a number of comments that we received in our emails, that I believe had to do with mainly the examples. But I, I need every one copied, so we can...
We did, we did receive those, as well.
Yeah, the comments that we received on Morris.
Should I, can I interrupt a Morris and Ritchie's conversation, then you go to the comments? Counsel? Does that board call the comments? Does that board call the comments?
I don't think it's called the comments, they're supposed to present their, their request. They're, they're, I couldn't hear them.
At this, at this point in time, I'm going to open up the floor for questions specific to the information that we reviewed this evening. If you just raise your hand, I will call you. There's a clipboard, three quarters of that, only clipboard we have. We'll circulate a clipboard, if you're going to be making comments or having questions, please sign so we have your name and address, so we can follow up with you if you have any further communications, we'd like to have your name for the records and your address.
And that is up here?
It's around the corner, the table, sir. Since you're coming, we'll take your comment first.
There was someone else here.
That was from the previous submission we heard. You can go ahead and, you can just, you can just.
Okay, I'll write my information down. I just wanted to let you know, I, I spoke, my name is Bill Horn, and I sent everyone an email.
You did?
Yes. And I spoke at the latest meeting of all of you here. And this gentleman here was sitting next to me here. I just wanted to let you know that we have to pay attention to what they're saying because they're not saying that this is all preliminary, but it is. They're making plans for Southfield.
Right.
And if we are against it, I caught, talked to state officials, and they said we have to talk to our county officials.
They said we have to talk to them.
Now, you have to talk to the county so they can override them.
We just went to the county meeting.
We just, they were in county meetings, and they said.
Mr. Horn, excuse me, we're discussing these issues at hand this evening, we're not generating comments regarding the Southfield's development.
But you are discussing Southfield planning.
We are discussing.
Right over our heads.
We are discussing.
Oh, I know what you're, yeah, I know what you're saying. Sir, hold on one second. If there's one person talking at time, this will stay much more organized and professional. I'm not going to let it get out of here. If I have to gather somebody to get you removed from the room, that'll happen. If you have a comment, keep it specific to the thing. We've heard, do you have any, any additional information other than what you just?
I just want to tell you, you have to pay attention and come to all these meetings and don't let them get away with this.
All the meetings are posted, all the information we reviewed is posted online. Jean Miller is the town planner, her office is open. Write your business hours, you're welcome to come in and visit, or you may do some submissions or information, any comments that we have. There is a county meeting, I believe, they have seven of you?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, there is a county meeting with the developers and County of Elkton, at the, in this room, actually.
No.
The county, oh, sorry, the Elk Room at the county building, there is a meeting out there, that's open, open forum. I do suggest you keep involved. This particular exercise this evening strictly in regards to language, a PUD with no Southfields, no archway in, no nothing attached to it. Thank you, sir.
And what you're calling this, tomorrow?
It's, it's in the paper, I don't know.
Elk Room at the county building.
That is the county.
Nine AM, everybody hear this?
Yes.
I, I don't know what the county criteria wants for that.
They don't have any PUD regulations, so we're setting them for today for every future development that comes into this area, so they can say yes and no or whatever they want to, that's the difference for today. So if we say okay, we're agreeing with everything they want to do.
That's not true.
We have, we have a lot, it says it right there in the paper, in the, it does, in the paper. My opinion is that you're putting all this air, we have all this vacant area that already has not been used to begin with, tons of stores and everything else, and we're getting more people here. Why do people want to come here? We are rated the number ten worst town in the, all of America, the ten worst, we're on that list, so they're getting marked at the corner.
Once again, that's all based, we are, we are discussing language, not crime, not area, we're discussing language, and make your point to language.
To language, okay. Like you said, we need more things for the kids to do. We need stipulations on these new developments, what they're going to do with sheds, we should have done this for all of Elkton, but let's hope about this development, since we'll start there. And furthermore, we have to do something for the kids, they're getting into trouble doing drugs, zoning, we have to make more available. You're saying that you want roller rinks and this and that, I want a roller rink back, I want this to be the movie theater, I want things back for these kids to do, there's nothing for them to do.
If you read this language, then the solo thinks that.
Yeah, in certain areas, but we have so much space that hasn't been used yet either.
Once again, this is particular to.
We're going to build a whole new thing that we're not even using across the town for, that.
A PUD cannot go anywhere in town. PUD is certain floating.
Then it should be, we should fix it across the town before we sell, go to the whole number one.
Right, I mean, any more questions?
It's the truth. Like the hotels, I think fifty foot is, you should have a lot more between the hotels and businesses and things like that, I think it should be at least a hundred. Fifty feet ain't much, that's from here to the corner. We need some space here, we're not used to this. We're, we are talking about everybody, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Delaware, these are people all going to come in from these companies, we're affecting a lot of different people. Also, you got all this zoning for all these things, where's the water coming from? Because we do not have enough, because my wells are going to go dry again like you did with, with the Holly Open.
The, the water is being provided by the town of Elkton.
Which we need to.
Which has plenty of capacity. I know Mr. Horn was at the meeting that was discussed.
But there's someone in the tank just in case for emergencies, that tank is not saving our emergencies. There's not going to be a water tower there? Somebody was saying that there's.
We haven't seen a design for the property yet. We're not seeing a design.
Because that's what they said the last time, when it was down on White House, when they built that development, and everybody, not everybody, it went down the line, all the wells had to be recharged. We're outside the town limits, we didn't.
Right, and the mayor has indicated that the folks on Baloney.
I'm a French town.
And Frenchtown Road will be able to hook into the town's water and sewer.
Out of our own pocket, or they pay for it?
No, he indicated at that meeting, and Mr. Horn was there, that the hookups, the hookup fee would be waived, but your lateral fee would have to pay.
I thought we're getting off base again, yes.
It's a huge concern for our people, I know we're getting off base, but they're saying.
This is the, this is the very infancy stage of trying to develop what even can be done, if it can be done. I encourage you to stay involved, but your comments down, we're getting off base for what we're here tonight to discuss.
You can't really zone stuff if you don't have enough water for all these people and businesses, you really can't, so this stops everything right there, so that's a problem.
If that's the case, if you're, if you're right, that will be the case.
Okay, yes, so I want that to be considered into everything, I don't know.
We'll be, we'll have to have waters for you now, so store water management has to be done. This allows, that can be done, man, they said it's one problem.
So we also have put this development in with one lawnmower for the whole county out of the store, now that's a little ridiculous as well, too. But the, in between the spaces are the businesses, and they need to be set back further, they should be at the beginning of the property, so we know where they are, they should be at the beginning and the rear, so when somebody comes out and a big trucking trailer turns around in my front yard like they've been, because we got a lot of police, you know, in our area, because that's another problem here with the zoning.
Ma'am, you, I'm going to have to ask you to step back from that, because your comments are irrelevant.
They're not a problem, they have everything, you can't even do it without having water.
Excuse me, one thing you have to understand, if this PUD is approved in the language itself, there's provisions in there, I don't know if you heard, notice to adjacent property owners shall, applicants shall provide notice of all continuous property owners no less than ten days or no more than three days prior to a public hearing. So once the first phase of this PUD comes in, you will get certified now and you get noticed about these meetings, you will be kept on record.
My name is Barbara Myers, I live at nine oh four Frenchtown Road, so right across from me, which is now a beautiful soybean field, is going to be the two-hundred-and-fifty-acre industrial complex, which, this is what we want to know, what the heck is this? Because two-hundred-and-fifty acres industrial con, complex, to me, sounds like a lot of asphalt. Asphalt gives run off of diesel, chemicals, spoil, oil running off of our water, our wells, the township wells, there's wetlands there. Really? So what is this, I didn't hear anybody discuss this two-hundred-and-fifty-acre industrial complex.
That's not part of, that's not.
But this is just for the houses, too.
This is really talking about language for any project that will, if this project Southfields disappears, the next contract purchaser can come in, he has to follow the same guidelines that are established. There is no established guideline right now. They can go with high district, dense residential home, and for all houses they want in that area. And nobody can stop that, legally, there's no way to stop that.
Twenty, twenty-five hundred homes, thank you, that.
This PUD overlay restricts and manages the use of that, and so the language isn't placed, nobody can do anything there, other than build X amount of houses per acre, I'll name it four.
Who's going to be buying that?
That's not.
That's not, I understand, I understand, but this is just, it's a bad idea.
Just stressing, this is just an ordinance for, in many places in our town, things floating to them. Everything you guys said, none of us here at this county did that, we're not to that point yet, guys, this is what I want to say, I know you're all concerned and not.
I think it's beyond that point, because you guys have already made changes, you did the stop and ride, you did the water briefing, you're on two thirteen, it's affecting all of us, it's crazy.
Doesn't relate with anything in particular, something that doesn't exist in our town that, that we have to address, because frankly, it exists in many towns, and ours, ours hasn't addressed that, and the time has come, where it should be interesting to somewhere in our council, that we all know about, but we're not addressing any points of any specific properties at this time or anything like this.
You're a large PUD, you're a large PUD, I'm just saying, he's saying we're not, and that's incorrect, you are talking about a large PUD, I really am.
I mean, I'm talking about.
A large PUD has ordinance and language to the large PUD, right? And in that, you have light manufacturing, heavy manufacturing with exemptions, so you are talking about asphalt, because I don't think that the light industry or the heavy, with the exemption, is going to take place on grass. So then you are talking about the language in these ordinances, and these are the details, as they say, the doubles in the detailing, because the ripple effects of just going, yeah, this is great, he's going to do this and this, he's going to make nice, does not show the ripple effects, so you need to have language in, for the PUD designation, okay, now, for the type of pavement or whether it's asphalt, whether it's cement, those types of things, but each type, I don't know if you have any professional engineers, I am not, but every type of foundation has an issue, right, in the surrounding area, so those types of details do need to be.
Those details all refer back to the original standards that are in for every type of building that comes in anywhere, that goes back to the Department of Natural Resources, Environment, State, and the county. All of those regulations are standard across the board, that piggyback on the recent regulation.
But in an area that's not there yet.
This is, this ordinance is not for a hearing matter, that works, I want to keep reiterating that, we're not talking about certain areas that our town currently has a specific, we're talking about the ordinance for a type of developers in our town, in general, places that it does apply to the flooding there, again, we're not addressing those matters this week at this current time, okay? This is an ordinance not regarding a project that we don't even have before us. I, I keep saying that, and I keep saying, we're not discounting any of you, I didn't even say anything, but we need to hear things that are totally related to this thing, all those things you spoke of are wonderful, and they come up in different parts of the process, all right?
This is a part of the pudding in between, nothing.
Not a specific problem, there's actually, there's a very good point, and I hope to see them later on, if it needs some projects, if it does come, that's wonderful.
My name is Detective Almond at eight ninety-four Frenchtown Road, and I just wanted to ask the lady that was doing the presenting.
Your manager.
I, I apologize. You kind of started this off by saying that the language had been changed after discussion with the developer. Can you just go through who that developer is?
Stonewall Capital, hired Morris Ritchie Associates, their engineering firm, and the, their engineering firm has had experience with other PUDs in other cities, and they wanted to work with us to update the language, and we, we, previous to this, the one that was like eight through ten years ago, we worked with the engineer, Bruce Myers, at that time, for the same thing.
I can't hear because you're talking behind.
Yeah, so we, we talked to, you know, the developers are also stakeholders in this, and they know what the current climate is with development, and so we, we take all in, you know, and our attorneys drafted most of the ordinance themselves, and so we, we relied heavily on another engineering firm, our local attorneys, you know, and then the staff, the local staff.
But just for clarification, Stonewall is the one that is looking into doing Southfield?
Yes.
Thank you. John? Is your name? Are you done, ma'am?
Oh, he said.
I didn't think she was done.
No, I didn't even start.
Go ahead.
So, so, so one of the questions I have with the architectural, you have, and, which didn't make you build, because unless you're an architectural architect or a professional in the years, I don't see how you're going to give a look at architecture, that you're going to get handed to you, and remember, look at that, for instance, just like she was saying, working with the developer, that's the cat eating the canary, right? You give the canary to the cat, he's going to help you change the work, do exactly what he wants. He is not going to look at it, and I know, he might be a woman of person, I'm not trying to say that, but as a businessman, okay, his job is to make, his job is to get what he wants, and he basically said, they, you don't get his industrial thing, he's not getting anything, okay? So you say that this PUD does not have anything to do with Southfields, yet you're using the developer of Southfields to help you write the wording in the PUD. Tell me how that's not, tell me how that's kosher, it's not. So you're going to have different types of engineering documents provided by the developer with no architectural review committee looking at them, or any engineering committee looking at them.
Excuse me, one second, we do have professional staff in, employed by the town, and KCI Engineering is employed by the town, reviews everything before it comes to us, so it goes to, it goes to two different reviews by professional planning, whatever it is.
And, and, and I'm sorry, in this section that Jean reviewed, I don't know, maybe it's hard to follow, I have a copy, but in Article eleven, planned development, there are four pages of architectural design standards.
Have you known that you're appearing to that? And again, I don't know what your engineering's are, they might be professional engineering, civil engineers, but not architects. You're saying you don't have an architectural review committee, I don't know if you're an architect.
We have architecture.
KCI is a well-known company, right?
That's good, that answers that. Again, having the developer helping create the wording of the PUD when you're telling this audience that, oh, this is a PUD, and it goes anywhere, but yet, the developer is going to have those words by us.
It wasn't developers, it was their engineer, who, the engineer has had extensive experience with other cities with PUDs, and, you know, so this is another professional that deals with this and.
Who has a business agenda and who has a profit agenda, right? He's working for this guy who's paying him, and he's going to write in there what that guy wants, because that's who's getting paid.
But that's not, we didn't adopt language that they wrote, we had, most of this ordinance was essentially unchanged from the original ordinance back ten years ago.
I have four pages of my handwriting.
And some of the, some of the changes had to do with larger communities, which we weren't familiar with, but other communities were, so.
Man, I, I can tell you, do I know Parks and that, do I even know who the city which it is, and I saw him sitting right here, I wouldn't, you know, I read, used to things like that, like that, but I can tell you that, you know, if someone is sitting here and is going to review this and, you know, I don't know the position here, this is my town, it's my community, it's where I'm from, right? So, and you may be sitting up here shopping, doing stuff, reading things, all this organized, read all this, gone through all these comparisons, what changed to be, what does exist, all those types of things. Also, you know, went online and read other PUDs all around, you know, our state for comparison and things like that, and I, I mean, I, there's, there's nothing, if you will, you know, except my hands are not, you know, I'm no aficionado or anything like that, and it doesn't matter, but what I tried to do was go through with what they gave us, because they give us time to review and to bring us, you know, the plan to establish that, and went through and went and looked. And went through and went and looked all over and seen the different things. And this framework, if you will, that we have here presenting here is, is full of like the common things from all other, you know, PUD after PUD after PUD that I could find throughout the state. Just, just as an example to you. Not to say that any of you didn't do the same thing. But that's, you know, that's just an example here, maybe that, like, maybe some of your concerns or, or even things you may not know. Because I'm new actually, whatever else is. But I thought that would be a good thing to do. And that's what I did, to make sure nothing here is completely off the wall. Or that maybe that architect developer there, you know, we thought, you know, shot our way that wasn't realistic. And there's things you see there, they're within many PUDs throughout, you know, our state. From big counties to little counties to municipal. So they're here for Orleans, Hecars County, Bridger County, Water County, they're there, Bridge City, things like that.
I understand. I mean, however, every town we can, so.
Yes, it is.
I'll have that much for present. Every town might have one.
Yes, exactly.
You know? So I understand we're, but again, I, I think that those words in this PUD that they're trying to change. And again, I have four pages. I came in late because I was at the other meeting in the council. But I have four pages as much as I can write as fast as I can. I don't have a recorder with me. And I have four pages of changes here, right? And I missed a lot. So there's quite a bit of changes for you guys to absorb and to vote on, right? Anyway, what are the other ones? One of the other things that I thought process-wise doesn't give, would not give people warm fuzzies. And that is the thing of, for instance, if the plan that, if the fluid every plan goes to the mayor. And if, if the final, if the final plan doesn't match the fluid every plan, you're bypassing the state and the mayor gets to vote on it. And there's things that you guys get to vote on. That sounds like, almost like you guys have real powerful odds. And, you know, you could bypass this and this because you guys get to decide on something.
We don't have to go to the state for anything that the town passed unless it's a large.
State regulation.
State regulation.
Right, but I thought it was. And you're changing it so that it just goes to the mayor in court. That was planning, having to back to the mayor. If the plan differs from the original, it was right, it wasn't too far before twenty eight and.
If we see a final plan submitted to us that we don't think matches what we were pulling, we can then divert that back to the mayor commissioners for our final. If they don't feel comfortable with that last submission.
Oh, Mr. Mayor is going to want this no matter what.
You're assuming that's a.
No, I'm going by what was in the papers.
You're assuming that's true, too.
No, well, it's a quote from.
You're assuming.
I can read what it says and.
I'm not a legal professional.
Oh, he's here. Is he here?
That's, he's not here.
Okay, so I guess I got to go by what he said to me. If he's not here to say anything.
He's not on the agenda, see, can we get to your next question?
And just to that point, how that process goes is the reason it goes back to the mayor commissioners is because that's an amendment process to have to go back in front of them. So if they want to change something drastically from what was originally approved, you have to go back in front of the mayor commissioners. Because the zoning zone is something that the mayor commissioners have the final say on. So if there's a change to it, they have to make the decision before the planning commission can move forward.
I got that part.
That's the purpose. And then it would still, if the mayor commissioners were approved that, then they could go through the planning process. As they would many other phases of the development. But that, that's the reason it would go back to the board, that the planning commission can send it back. And that would be another couple of hearings for the mayor commissioners.
But you're changing the wording that went, that said that it was a state, something with the state. You know, again, it was going fast. But specifically that you're taking the word out that it's going to the state. And it's going to get picked next to the appeals.
No, no, it's not going to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So that's, that's a town about to.
An appeal from a decision by this board or an appeal from a decision by the mayor commissioners goes to Circuit Court. We're keeping that consistent. We weren't changing it so that an appeal from a decision by this board goes to the Board of Appeals, which is what was originally approved.
And the Board of Appeals is a town.
Is a town.
Board. Not a state board.
So we wanted to ensure that any appeals went to Circuit Court, not to the Board of Appeals from a decision of this board.
Okay, so I heard the word state, I made it up. Where does the word state come in? I could change it. So it goes to the Circuit.
I believe it's state, right? No, no, it goes to Circuit. So we were going to be consistent with the state regulations.
Oh, okay.
If the state's regulation states that it has to go to Circuit Court, we're going to be consistent with that.
Like I said, generally, we're down in here. I also agree with the other lady, setback, I think setback's a warrant fifty feet. And the facade, let me get the facade. Okay, so at first we talked about the facade. I do agree, it should just keep facing the road and the public sides. But the problem is, we should do this time, whatever's going to happen. The fact of it, let's say it's a restaurant, okay? Back of restaurants can get pretty nasty, right? If people are living behind and they have to go out of their house and look at that.
There are buffer yard requirements for different uses.
Well, if setback's only fifty feet. That's not very much, right?
And we would require screening of the either vegetation or fencing. Most folks, we have currently vegetation requirements, landscape requirements to buffer commercial, different land uses, commercial, residential, industrial, whatever. And with, if it's like industrial or residential, that's the maximum buffer yard we have to have. Which sometimes includes a barn depending on the depth, a lot of heavy planting. But what we found is that most folks say, yeah, but the, you know, the landscaping collects trash and this and that. So we actually had folks that abut the commercial uses on the forty, request that the commercial uses put up a solid fence. They would rather have a solid vinyl fence. Because, you know, it doesn't catch the trash, it stays clean, it doesn't, you know, probably die off in the winter time and that sort of thing.
Right, and that's probably true. And does that go for in the PUD for the, assuming it's a large part? But, yeah, the large part, so that I can understand.
Yeah, they don't have to have buffer yards to separate different uses.
So they would have a fence and a two.
And an extra.
How long is a setback down there? For the large part.
Buffer yard?
Yeah, because even with the fence, if you're living, you're talking about this guy. Okay, I know it talks about the back door, but anyway, I'm just kidding. So you have trucks going back and forth and then you live, let's say you live on Maloney. You live on Maloney. And this is on Frenchtown, the same. And somebody's going to have trucks going by. You know, a fence doesn't quite cut back out the noise or the smell.
Because the insulation's far.
It's not that far along. So if you're sitting out in the backyard and you've got trucks going back and forth and they're doing so, it's nice.
So the buffer yard or the, the yard requirements, the rear yard requirements for industrial is, is forty feet. But then there's a screening requirement in addition to that.
That was a.
So for an industrial zone against a residential zone with buffer yard D, which is a pretty substantial, I think it's our highest buffer yard requirement. Which the buffer yards would run between twenty-five and seventy-five feet. If it's twenty-five feet, you have to have a six-foot earthen berm. And so if you're trying to minimize the buffer yard, you're going to paper it with a berm. But as you increase more and get beyond like fifty to seventy-five feet, you can do just the heavy plantings. But like I said, a lot of folks, when asked, the residential uses adjacent, who prefer the vinyl fencing, solid vinyl fencing? In addition to the landscape.
I thought they liked fence with landscape down the outside fence to make it look like they have to maintain, but also more than forty feet. It would have to be even seventy-five feet. We're talking big trucks. Is extremely annoying to anyone in a normal house. You have a baby trying to sleep and you've got trucks going around.
There's a way to go down the road.
Most houses are built to sustain that kind of noise, right? In residential homes. So I would really go with trying to change that back to what the community would say. Residents are not going to be happy otherwise. Okay, the, the red line language, I have an issue with that. Because what you're saying is that the developer has to come in and he has to list the benefits. The developer should have to list the benefits and do research and list the bad effects, too. He's going to be all sunshine and that's fine, of course. He's going to list benefits for any change that he wants, okay? Who's going to look at the bad part?
So what the developer has to do is, if he's proposing something other than what is required in our zoning ordinance currently for standard zoning. He has to show if he's saying, well, instead of, you know, forty-foot yards, I want to be thirty-foot yards. He has to state that. And then he has to say, how this project, even with reduction to thirty-foot yards, is better than a standard development? Because he's doing X, Y, and Z to make it.
Right, but what backs that up? He should have to have some type of. That's the word I'm looking for. Not, not just like a, not just an engineering, not just a setback, right? Of, okay, we're going to forty to thirty, oh gee, I just cut out that feet. You know, that's not very bad, right? But that effect is within that ten feet, because you cut out that ten feet. What are the bad things that that can do? He can do that. He doesn't have to just give you sunshine and that's fine, okay? He's got engineers on board that he's paying for that can give you the bad effects, the ill effects, the ripple effects of any change that he wants. And that's what you should be demanding, to be well informed and you have all facts on your mind. Not just fresh air and sunshine.
And developer could request smaller rear yards, but then provide more parkland than would ordinarily be required to provide.
I understand that, I understand. He can talk about benefits. That's not my point, right? He's going to struggle with all the benefits he can't get his way, obviously. Otherwise, why would he ask for that? You know, obviously, he's going to try to back it up to make everybody, he's on his way. My point is, okay, I know. And if I just gave my boss something that said, oh, good things, okay, he's going to throw me out of the office. He hates me, he gives me good, bad, and the ugly, right? And that's what this guy should have to do. He's got to do good, bad, and the other. And pay for the engineering and, you know, the research.
Sure.
Whether it's help, whether it's the waste, whether, you know, the effects on the land or the runoff of whatever he's doing. That's the changes that he's going to make. He should have to pay for that research.
They do. They have to, they have to engineer the project and they have to comply with all the state local and federal laws regarding, you know, water quality and sewer and stormwater management, all of that.
But that's not what you said. And that's not what you have here. What you have written is that when he changes something, he has to show me the best.
That comes to this board and we can stick to it wherever we want based on every single submission from our.
Okay, but the difference is, he's got the time to come up to do the research. He's got the money, it becomes him, right? He's going to do the research to give you the proof. He should have to do the research to give you the proof. You don't have the time in your hands to do all that research. And then you have to hire somebody and pay for all that. You put that burden on him.
Respectfully, those things are usually reviewed by these, these guys back here. And they, they do that research and have an extensive checklist of each and every plan that, everything that we review here that comes before us typically. For whatever phase of project it may be. There's, there's a huge checklist for things that, because once they change something, they don't have to actually require them to change other things or, or different requirements, what they've done and things like that. And those things, they, those two guys, the two engineers, that's what they do. Who brought us in, provide us that checklist. And everything is, everything is checked off diligently. You know, we go through reviewing these things. Because a lot of them are common sense things that, that like you said, they would take them and modify it, but when we go through it and compare it to regulations and that, that's still really, just to give you insight, those actually are typically handled extensively by professionals. Present up here and mediate that before their ultimate process of report discipline.
I mean, I'm sure you're not even being writing. To me, what I spent extra change on since twenty one, twenty seven. But I just never heard anything about same thing. Again, I just want, just the other thing is going back to those, to the laws, the R one, R two, R three. My suggestion to keep those as large as possible. They're talking about these parts and no matter where they go, they're talking bad amount of housing, that amount of townhouses, that amount of single family homes. You need to have separation from whoever you're in a meeting, right? There's an area somewhere, you're in a meeting someday. You need to have setbacks to not encroach upon those other people. New developments are wonderful, but quite frankly, most are more than its help, okay? The houses might look pretty, but they knocked down all the trees, they don't have fences, they don't have this. So one house, one McMansion, and to the next McMansion, and to the next McMansion, divorce.
That's why we're trying to get zoning ordinance in place for this big of a project. And any big project.
Any, right. And that's what I'm saying, they need to have the setback. And that's my point. And my point is, they need to have a setback. So that's for A, not right on top of each other, because that's our, not right on top of.
That's, you're voicing your opinion, other folks don't mind that.
People buy townhouses, they want townhouses.
Right, they don't want any.
Townhouses are a little different.
Sorry, get off to hand it again. I need to cut short, you kind of.
I have.
Do you think I want to comment again? Well, your points are well taken and I encourage you to continue to follow this process.
Thank you. Very good. Thanks, Mr. Conover. Can I, like, is there a process where I can just submit written comments that you all can consider? Because it's right here. This is good given taken, you should be doing this.
We have your comments.
Well, I, I'm just based upon, it's mostly a process based upon a legal experience in planning. So I can submit some ideas.
After the required counsel.
So my question is, if I just write it as some way it can get to you all and be part of your deliberations? Because I'm seeing, these people have a lot of things to say here and there.
Is it possible to present them, just a summary of it and then?
It would only take five or ten minutes.
Your answer, Mr. Conover.
Can I ask you a further question?
Yes, sir.
What is the definition of a continuous property? Is a property separated by state pressure that has to be through two hundred years? Is that still considered like a complete property? Is that two separate properties?
Are you saying continuous or contiguous?
It's continuous.
No, I'm asking, are you saying continuous or?
Continuous. As far as she's, Jane mentioned, a small field is fifty meters or less, a large field is a hundred or more. Again, maybe a large one. It says it can only be two separate properties. We have to be two continuous properties, because it can't be more than that. When I saw the map the developer had up here, he had two thirteen with audio two. And there's another one down with industrial. So it's actually three properties.
That was all contiguous.
It's all contiguous.
It's continuous because two thirteen doesn't separate.
There's two contiguous parcels separated by group two thirteen.
Right, it can't be more than.
Two thirteen doesn't separate.
Two thirteen separates those two parts.
Then there's also a wet man, an industrial on the other side of the wet man.
Yeah, but it's.
It's a continuous surround, it's only out there and what?
Right, exactly. It's contiguous on the southern portion of the.
It's contiguous. We can get you, we can get you, don't go on that and clarify. If you just come to the Dean's office, I should be seeing if you want to map it. Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, I do have some specific comments related to the articles. But I also have a couple of questions for clarification. There's a lot of words said tonight and I'm not sure I understood some things correctly. PUD floating zone request, is that the same as what I was referring to, PUD overlay at one point in time?
Yes.
So in other words, if I'm a developer and I come in with a PUD and I come in with a floating zone request? If I want to use the land to develop houses where it's currently zone commercial and my floating zone request is approved? Then my zone request trumps the current zoning of the land?
Correct, correct.
Okay. So then if I have an approved PUD floating zone request? So then if I have an approved PUD floating zone request with respect to permissible uses, does that trump the PUD zoning ordinance I'm talking about here?
The zoning ordinance is the governing language for the floating zone.
Okay, so even if I have an approved floating zone allows me to, if I have an approved floating zone where I'm doing something that's not necessarily permissible use within Article Ten, the zoning ordinance trumps my floating zone?
The only permissible uses within the floating zone are the ones that are outlined in Article Ten, in the permissible use table. There's a separate column for small PDBs, and then one for large PDBs. So those are the only uses that are permitted in those areas, and some are permitted by right, some are permitted with conditions and special exceptions.
Right. This was talked about earlier, but I didn't hear the examples within Article Ten, Section Seven, again, permissible uses table. What I'm referring to is area four manufacturing, um, I think, again, the mask up here, I didn't see examples of what light heavy manufacturing are, could you provide that again?
As I said, usually the determination of heavy and light manufacturing is something that's subjective, based on interpretation by the community building and planning, building and zoning offices. With light manufacturing, it's something that's completely, completely contained in the building, um, there's no storage of hazardous materials outside, that sort of thing. So, you know, sort of what you distinctly think of as light and heavy manufacturing. Heavy manufacturing might have more noise, more odors, that sort of thing.
I hear it's not really satisfying.
So your suggestion to this board is that they should adopt a definition of light and heavy manufacturing?
Right, because when I look at some of these other areas and definitions, you may have a sentence that says, um, you know, let's see, operation design and to attract, for example, attorney's offices for architects, other similar discussions. So most of those, I'm seeing some description of function and example, and I'm not seeing that here. So it wasn't intuitively satisfying what I'm looking at. But when I look through most of this, what I'm seeing are more of these, I won't call them small business types, because we're talking about terminus conditions, architects, planners, architects, but when I come to area four, quite honestly, that seems a bit different to me. And my comment here is that I believe that area four should be removed from permissible uses within large PUD. And in case I missed it, any current or future reference to industrial, warehouse, or distribution center type functions should not be included in permissible uses. Why do I say that? A couple of examples. Elton already has four existing business parks, all of them are enterprise zones, plus four hundred and ten acres. These are areas where those types of functions belong. Also, and that same comment would also apply to Section Ten, the way it's currently shown here, nothing is shown as permissible use, I think it should remain that way, okay? That fits into things such as storing of goods not related to sale, storage within completely enclosed structures, many warehouses, I think those things should not be included in the list of permissible uses.
And they are not listed unless-
I think you should say that. Also, in Article Ten, Section Three, Subsection Two, it states several things, but it also mentions that where shall the table of permissible uses be interpreted to allow a use in one zoning district when the use in question is more closely related to another specified use that is permissible in other zoning districts? So again, with my comment with respect to the existing business areas, uh, there's four of those. Before I came here, I was able to determine that it's like three of the four are zoned business industrial, and light, heavy manufacturing are permitted uses. So there, once again, we already have areas set aside within the town, but those types of uses should be cited. Lastly, with respect to Article Two, I was encouraged to see the worry here with the definition of a large PUD. For those of you who attended the community information meeting on the twentieth of August, for a potential large PUD which shall not be named at this point in time, um, if you were outside the county, any comments you made, you would definitely make me feel that your comments didn't merit any weight. But here now, the language is saying that non-residential uses shall primarily serve the residents of the region surrounding the large PUD. And I think the word region is going to be dependent on the type of PUD that's coming through, where it's located, who it's gonna impact. But I think then, now, even though I live outside of town limits, the concerns of all residents surrounding the PUD should be objectively considered. And for a potentially large PUD that may be coming down the line at some point in time, this region is gonna include a significant number of county residents, because of its impact, it's the transportation to schools, and it's gonna span the rest of the country on the south. It's not simply a town development issue.
I agree one hundred percent. And as this board runs, I think we're all in agreement here that everybody that's in here, the majority of these homeowners aren't in town residents. We plan on listening and then taking your comments, apart from when we make any decisions.
I appreciate that.
We're citizens as well, we don't, you know, we're not just monsters that come out and suck you.
I had sent you some comments earlier, but after tonight, I'm gonna revise those comments and send them to you again.
Okay, I did forward the comments to the-
We did receive your comments. Everybody just sent emails, we did get copies.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because I, I want to amend those for some new information presented tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tony?
Thank you for letting me speak, and I'll try to be as brief as possible. For those that don't know me, my name is White Tony, I'm the attorney here in Elton, Maryland. I have, I do represent the pro developer of Southfield, that's, I'm here to just address my anyways. One thought I had, I know you all were concerned about the, trying to identify the region that affected, and wanted to be more specific about it. A couple of things to remember is, A, if you're gonna have employment type operations there, that's already affecting very locally the people that are living there and working there. So you have to keep in mind that when you're serving a region, you're serving it by providing employment as well as by maybe selling you services. Another thing you should be aware of is, I have a long history of representing county government, local governments, and doing a lot of pellet work and other work in terms of land use and zoning law. There's a long history of, for example, in most of these zoning cases, you have to define the affected neighborhood. It's not defined in the ordinance that define on a case by case basis. So, and Maryland, of course, has been very comfortable with allowing local commissions and committees to look at each case on a case by case basis and determine, you know, what you believe is the appropriately effective region or area if you're making the determination. So I would encourage you not to be too overly concerned about the fact that you can't nail it down as terribly specific to any ordinance itself. The other thing that I wanted to bring out to you, and talk to you about a lot of this procedural, um, the plan you're developing is designed to provide flexibility. And so I, I've emphasized there ought to be an opportunity to allow for modifications and not get hung up on the precise legal terminology in case of all that involves zoning variances. And so I noted, they have put modification language in here in Section Eleven, but you have a lot of the variance language that you're copying in, in Article Eleven, Section Eleven's three, four, five, six, those, that's all variance type language. I would suggest to you that you should, if you're going to take advantage of what you're trying to do here, what you should do is if somebody submits a modification request, to me, we should refer back to Section One of Article Eleven. It lays out in a lot of language what is the intent of the PUD, and what you should provide to Article eleven A, the modification is, the developer would have to come to you and convince you that any modification meets the criteria of Section, and goals of Section One of Article eleven. And that's what you should be looking at, and not get hung up on the technical variance language used in zoning ordinances. That would allow you to delve into the kinds of issues I would like to think that you would want to delve into in trying to determine just how you want this PUD to be designed, and give you the flexibility that you might want to use. As indicated, lot sizes, any number of other things, setbacks, etc., you might very well want to look at, things different from your typical zoning variance. Architectural features, although if somebody came up with a good, some language about that, but I mean, if, if it's visible, I'm concerned that a lot of that language on architectural features in, uh, Section, or Article Eleven, Section Sixteen, uh, makes more sense in front of the building. Uh, that, that doesn't mean you shouldn't, uh, be able to look at materials and some other things you're using on the side of the building. But even in very high end developments, many times we want a building, or in the corner of, you know, you're on the street corner, like you want, or the side facing the street, still look very different than, than the parts of the building that are not facing up on the street. Also, keep in mind that typically, particularly when you're dealing with residential units, what tends to happen over time is people plant trees, they plant shrubs, they plant et cetera, so it's probably, again, the sides and rears are probably not as crucial as those portions of the, um, building as it actually faces into the street. That's something to keep in mind. Then, I, I, getting to Article Eleven, Section Twenty, which I think is the, um, appeal situation, I think you should have language in here. Typically, what most zoning ordinances and land use ordinances provide is you have thirty days to appeal from when you receive a written opinion, not from when you have your meeting. As a landowner, many times trying to determine whether or not you feel you have a basis for an appeal, or you should appeal, is based upon what is actually in that written decision. Many times that written decision, when it comes from bodies such as yours, because you are a volunteer, it might take about a part of thirty days to get that written decision out, so you're not really giving that property owner very much time, if any, to make an intelligent decision whether or not they should appeal. So I would urge you to consider allowing an appeal thirty days from when a written decision is issued to the applicant or the landowner, so that they have time to take a look at, basically, what's the basis of that decision, and what are the details of that decision, and whether or not they want to appeal it, whether they think they should appeal it. And finally, with regard to timing, and it's late and I'm starting to forget where, where it's at, but the section that talks about how long plans are good for, I would recommend that you allow that a preliminary plan is approved, that it was valid for two years and could be renewed on one year extensions thereafter, because in today's world, many times, from preliminary to final, when you're getting all of that final engineering and your concrete work and everything, it takes much longer than you want it to. And so it just eliminates that pressure, many times you can't get there within a year. It takes eighteen months or so to get there. And then, on the final, I would recommend that you make a final plan when it's approved, valid for two years, and that within the, after two years, that the developer has to record the plat, uh, the plan, and that'll, that'll drive him where he has to then build, because the tax book is extremely expensive, and you should record that, that plan. And then you could maybe provide for an extension for a year if he may be here for that. But unfortunately, in today's world, in addition to the great amount of detail they're gonna have to go through with your town, as you know, there are many, many other agencies that could get involved in preliminary and final approval of these projects, uh, from the state, county, et cetera. And also, probably, you're going to want, um, your consultants that you pay to review it, and sometimes you'll have to, or have to those responsible to get back. So I'd suggest that you try to give everybody a little bit more time to get that accomplished. I want to thank you for your time and attention. I wanted to say that I am impressed with what, what has been generated, there's been an awful lot of work done in a very little amount of time, and impressive amount of work and good work this has been done.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Who's going next? Be my next, go ahead.
I'm going to leave, because my back to the head is operated on the toilet.
All right, so, my name is former greeters, I live in thirty five Saratoga. I just had a question about the noise portion, is there any for a B, for a large PUD, a residential commercial vehicle? Because I live in the low east area, I live in the corner in the beer warehouse. I hear the trucks in the morning. So if you put a lot of the residential on the pub on the other side, it's gonna be the same thing. So I just wanted, you guys want to go with noise restrictions, or, you know, something to protect the residents, and enough for this bottle for whatever pop comes along the way.
Thank you.
Do we have that footage, other places in town?
No, we, um, the problem with the noise orders, and then the square decimals, is you have to have somebody who's out there and checks it, because I'm gonna have that one as a-
That's the thing, in that case, probably just a, a traveling business producing something, I think, more than waiting for it, because I doubt, you know, trucks, and those are living in that thing, even if it's as important, if they say, Mark, we're gonna reach any of that one.
This is a back of a, this is a beacon, this is back of a beacon. I work for many trucks, so those beakers are loud, so people hear.
From a distance, they will sound here, if that's right.
Yes, Ruth.
You know what? I looked at these people tonight, they're very bright people, they're smart, and one of them looks retarded, and, oh, God, as soon as we got that paper and looked at it, I followed it, that's why I stood up when they were reading it, and I said, what is it, Southfield? Yeah, somebody knocked on somebody's front door and says, boy, I got a deal for you, and they bought it. It sounds like, and, and lawyers, wait, Dwight Tommy, it was like, he's ready to cut you ribbon, right? Or whatever he's representing. But as far as the water, let me tell you where the water comes from. If you look down Frenchtown Road, I have the thick house on Frenchtown Road on three fifty, but if you go down to at Mrs. Cloxen's lane, she's two hundred, right across the street from hers is an open, into an open field. Okay, there's three wells, one, well one, two, and three. When they tested well number one, they took out two million gallons, okay?
I hate to interrupt you, but we, once again, we're here to talk about language, not a project in this specific-
They're talking about water.
We're not talking, we haven't talked, water's not in, there's no water mentioned in this language.
I know, but everybody got up here to talk about water. Water's not me talking about, I'm trying to tell you where it came from.
I, it's all about where it came from.
Wait, 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 wait. I heard everybody say, well, Elkins supplied the water- I heard everybody say, well, Elkins supplied the water. Yeah, because they're getting it from there, from that field. 2 million gallons, they went out there one day. The very next week, Mr. McCon, I think his name is, was Mr. McCon or Mr. McDonald, had to dig a new well. Dave Leiter, right now, four people had to dig a new well, and one of them was Hamid Scott. So anyway, that's, that's one thing I had to say. And I just, I, I don't know, these people are fighting for their lives, they're fighting for their livelihood, they're fighting for their families and the land that they work so hard for. Don't sell it. Don't give it to them. Did anybody investigate these people that came from, where, North Carolina? The sky dropped out of the sky? Did anybody investigate them?
That's not part of what we're talking about.
Oh, okay, oh, okay. Nobody investigates them, so anybody can just take what they want.
If somebody owns a piece of property, they can play by the rules that are set forth by a municipality and do what they want, as long as there is rules and they conform to them. That is what we were trying to establish.
Right. And that paper that was passed out tonight is a free ticket to accrue something. It's a free ticket to anything they, they want to do. I mean, it's, it's, well, I'm drunk, I can't get it.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jennifer German, and I had a couple of questions, and I will apologize in advance, because it wasn't until a couple of months ago that this word PUD entered my life, and I realized I needed to pay attention. So I have some questions that might seem pretty basic, but they might be basic and helpful to others as well. My first question is, is there a requirement at the state or federal level for a town to adopt a PUD?
Do I embarrass you?
No.
Oh, I did.
And are there PUD regulations at the federal or state level?
No.
And is there a requirement that you coordinate with the county and the state on PUD?
Would require any kind of coordination for any development, if it impacts county roads, for instance, if a property abuts a county road or a state road, or any other jurisdictional issues like that, but mainly for the roads.
And so in preparation of this PUD, was Cecil County also allowed to provide input into your design of the PUD?
For our regulations? No. We, we did not ask them for input into, we're, we're separate entities, we're separate jurisdictional entities.
So even though they're likely to abut a county road or a state road?
If, if, whatever the development is, impacts the roads, then they would have to coordinate with the county roads division regarding any improvements or whatever else they might require for that road.
So this is maybe a really simple question, but there's no requirement to do this. And so, maybe somebody can just answer me simply, why are we doing this?
It's my understanding that with a planned unit development, sometimes the planned unit development can provide the flexibility and the mixture of uses that's much more successful than traditional zoning. And a lot of times, the developers, the people who do this for a living, know what's going on in the business world and they know it'll be successful. There have been old PUD languages where you've had just a mixture of residential uses and just a little bit of commercial. And I was informed by developers that when they get, start to get built, a lot of types of commercial uses don't succeed when they end up vacant. And so with this, if you add more types of uses, there's more opportunity for the PUD to be successful. And a little more flexibility would kind of play down the slide.
I mean, all we need to do is look to Midtown for some examples, right? And to our own county even, to look for some failed examples of previous developments. So I think a lot of folks that I talk to, that's what they're concerned about. I think that, you know, there, there was a lot of feedback given tonight, and I just, are you all voting on this PUD language tonight?
We are voting on recommendation to the mayor commissioner. The mayor commissioner's making the bottom decision. They can or not choose about our lead.
It just seems like there's not been adequate time for the public to comment. And I know that I only read it in the paper a few days ago and had no chance to really think about it much, other than coming here tonight. It would be nice if the public had some greater input, I think, to the process, especially since you're creating policy for every future development of this size and type. I think this board, and I, again, I recognize and appreciate the time that you dedicate to this. You have the ability and the responsibility to reshape this town for everyone. And I just hope that the way you choose to reshape it is in the image that the residents wish it to be shaped. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy about that. I appreciate it to a place that you're going to live in, that you would want your kids to live in, grow up in, and live next door to. Because that's very, you know, the developer, he's not going to live there, they act, you know, people that, he's not going to live there. You know, I don't know if any of you guys are developers, I don't know if any of you are on Frenchtown Road, or even have those deals with the 213. Everybody has to do it on the radar. Already, before all this goes in, 213 is a part of the house.
Anyone else that hasn't had a chance to speak? Yes, sir.
I can't. You all see the topic. My name is Sean Biz, in the New York, in the big industry for 32 years, focusing almost exclusively on private second line of law. I've worked with over a dozen towns helping to develop ordinances similar to what we are trying to do here during the course of my career. I also understand exactly what you're representing. I share the Baltimore, because I share the Baltimore seat, and have done so for the last two years, so I understand what you all are dealing with right now. And it's really important work. I'm really happy that all the residents are here to speak out, and I look forward to working with them during the course of the adoption of this PUD ordinance and the development of the PUD for the Southfields project. We wrote a letter to Ms. Mina, Mina, I just want to say Mina, dated 2016, which was today. Over the last several weeks, we have worked with the town, the town council, in reviewing the ordinance. And at the end of the day, it's come down to maybe a handful of issues that I think are important, that you think are important. And these are important not only for a small PUD, but also for large PUDs. I guess I could go through them with you really quickly. If you look at my letter, number one has been addressed with the inclusion of low-impact commercial, so we're good to go there. On article 10, section 7, from the city use table, we would request that car washes and gas and convenience stores be permitted, as they are part of a convenience store, and that boat storage and marinas be permitted, because there is anticipated a marina, and it would be nice to be able to store boats and marinas. One of my biggest questions or concerns really does deal with article 11, section 11, the modifications. I agree with Mr. Tumey that the language that was presented to you, I believe, is overly onerous. If you compare other PUD ordinances, which is that what we have, the purpose of a PUD is for flexibility. And what happens when you identify sections 4, 5, and 6, excuse me, 11 modifications A, 4, 5, and 6, those are overly onerous, and we'll sort back to the variance language, and they're unnecessary. What you really should be striving for is design excellence for a PUD, and not worrying about a potential, you know, for example, a statement identifying whether the requests of modifications are a, a result of the applicant's actions, and two, based on conditions or circumstances that are self-created or self-imposed on the force statement. That's why we're asking you. That's just like your variance. So that does not, and every applicant would have the exact same thing. I recognize that these are just statements, but they're, they're all going to be negative statements to the negative of the applicant. And what we really should be focusing on is the design quality of the PUD. I go on to procedure, I think we're good on procedure, actually, on all of the procedure language, including the conditions, the modifications to the standards of leisure. We're good on article 14, my number four, article 14, section 14, D1 change, that has been updated. We are good on article 11, section 16, D1. The whole purpose of the add directly about the public street after this, after this will front. In all the PUDs that I've been involved with in my career, the focus is on the public street, okay? What am I seeing from the public street? I'm seeing the front of the house, or I'm seeing the side of the house. If I'm seeing the side of the house on a public street, that side of the house should have additional architectural treatments that wrap around to the front. If I'm, if I'm looking at two side yards, the side of one home and side of another home, those don't need to be treated in my case. They've never been treated in any PUDs that I've ever been involved in. It's always focusing on the side of the street, on the side wall facing the public street. And you'll see, there's, you're going to be able to require additional improvements to the side wall, to the side of the side. But it shouldn't be every side wall that says it from a public street. As I drive down a public street, I would be...
And that's what the discussion was.
Yes.
We already had that discussion.
Okay, and I'm trying to explain, the reason why I think it was important was that the view of those two sides, on a two-sided angle, when I'm driving down the street, is irrelevant.
Right, that's what was decided.
No, actually, what you decided...
What we decided was the side facing a street, the architectural component.
I'm sorry, I thought you decided differently, if that's the case.
Because I thought it said the front and the sides, not the back.
Front and the sides. Front and the sides that face the street.
Okay, great. We wanted to add stone, article 11, section 16, C5. It just says brick, adding stone, I think is pretty acceptable. It's amazingly proper. Article 11, section 16, C-7, we, we understand the town's concerns about townhomes. However, only allowing four-unit state townhomes will become incredibly monotonous, in our opinion. And so what we had suggested was require, allow no more than 20% of attached dwellings getting more than six in a row, no more than 20% of the attached dwellings getting more than five in a row, and remaining dwellings getting no more than four in a row. Will you provide you with some diversity of street skate? Because otherwise, four, 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 four is going to look really, really monotonous. And I think you go around and you can see common communities not suggesting seven, or eight, or 10, and maximum they would be allowed to have in a single spit would be six. And it would only be restricted to no more than 20% of the 50 in six. So provide you with a little bit of diversity, street skate diversity. Getting to appendix, number eight, article 11, section 17, add after the work of the appendix, except for items 64 and 76. If you go to the appendix A, and you have a chance to look through it, we agree with all of the requirements that are asked for in the submission of the PUD, with those two exceptions, and here's one. Grading and drainage plans, including rows, drainage, ditches, seven faces, and berms, is an incredibly detailed evaluation for a concept plan. You do grading when you get to preliminary plan, okay? That is, and if something changes, the grading makes something change between the concept and preliminary, and we come back to you, and you think that's a substantive change, or your, your team thinks that's a substantive change, your staff and your consultant thinks there's a substantive change, then we have to go back through the process. So we're not trying to obviate that requirement. We're just saying that that is a more appropriate requirement for both small and large PUDs in preliminary stage, not the concept stage. Okay? And the second one, is item 76, which is stormwater management. We believe that for a concept of a PUD, getting to concept-level stormwater management discussions is, is onerous, is very, very onerous. And again, you have the same protections, that if we haven't provided enough area in our concept to provide adequate stormwater at the preliminary stage, then we think that we have to modify the plans and come back to you. Okay? We have to go through the process again. So those are the two items in appendix A that we believe are, are not necessary for the concept plan. Now, what hap, what will happen is, the state of Maryland requires three-step review for stormwater management. It's concept, it's preliminary, and it's final. And what we would do, what we would do as an applicant would be, after our concept plan, our PUD and concept plan is agreed to, we would come back in for the concept plan and stormwater management on specific sections. Then we would submit the preliminary plan, get the concept plan approval, and then submit preliminary and final plans. We have to follow that process, but having that level of concept plan at the, that level of stormwater management design, at this time, at this conceptual level, we believe is onerous for small and large PUDs. We're not trying to obviate the state's preliminary first step review process. We'll deal with that, but it just doesn't need to be done for a PUD concept. So those are the two sections of appendix A.
Yeah, I have a question about that.
Sure.
We don't have appendix A. So when you talk about items 64 and 76, we're not following that.
Yeah.
Here's, I can show you. It's, it's a four-page list.
Everything has to be shown on concept, preliminary, and final, and general development plans.
Right.
And it lists everything.
So we've always looked at stormwater management in the concept.
Well, I'd like a little more, I can understand the grading, but the stormwater management will be fuzzy on, because it's my understanding that concept, stormwater management is due to concept plan approval. I think you could give us some guidance on that.
Yeah, I, I would say what he's saying is correct. It's sort of a smaller site, we sort of have an idea of what the concept is, and then we sort of get to it. But what he's asking for is, when you have this whole big plan here, the amount of engineering that goes into the stormwater initially, at that level, as long as they sort of reserve area and different things like that, that's the level everybody sort of decides on. And what he's really, what I'm hearing him say is, once that's sort of settled, then he comes in with his concept plan for the stormwater before he submits to the preliminary. So it's, it's, am I got it right?
That's correct. So he wants to come in for a concept, and then we got to look at a concept stormwater plan.
He has to look at those concepts.
I agree with him, right, but we got to prove... But, but what I'm saying is, initially, when he comes in, he's reserved areas for it, but he hasn't gone through, I mean, hundreds of hours of engineering. Well, if he's got to do that for the state, why, what's the big deal then? No, no, he does.
It's for the, it's for the county sort of consideration.
Okay, well, if you got to do it for somebody, what's... No, no, we'll see at the same time, it's just a different, I think, getting through the initial, for this size project, getting through the initial is, the stormwater is sort of incidental to what the grand scheme of the thing is. It's almost underground, it's distant places, like that. We can make that work, but to make those designs way up front and sort of give us those ideas, I'm, I'm convinced that you, we can make it work. And, and that's, the real decision is, okay, what are you presenting to us as engineers? And basically saying, yes, will this work? And that's where we've had problems in the past, is trying to get past the concept of the stormwater, is if we don't even think the concept plan will work. In this particular case, it's in the general, but before we would see the preliminary plans, we would have already agreed on the concept, and when the plans come in preliminarily for us to review, we would then review them, not at an extensive level, and give them feedback.
Yeah, fundamentally. It's just a very extensive process for a 50 or 100-inch piece, or for a property that's over 100.
We can generally do it for a much smaller piece, because there's only a few options. For something like this, they have tons of options.
And it's, it's also important to understand that during that process, there's going to be a lot of moving parts. We're going to be talking about these modifications to the standards issues, and we would have had to go on through really detailed engineering, and then you turn around and say, no, we're not going to do that modification. And all the engineering I just went through was sort of a door, because now I've got an increase lot width or lot depth or some, you know, so on and so forth. If I can get all of that stuff kind of nailed... If I can get all of that stuff kind of nailed down, and you've got the, you have the assurance that if we come back for the concept stormwater management, and your engineer doesn't approve it, and it makes major modifications to the plans, we're going to come back and get those approvals for it. Secondly is that, as a project, as any project will move forward, any project, it will probably develop in phases. You're going to develop a portion of this, a portion of that, so why do all of the concept stormwater management for everything, when it would be great to just focus on specific phases? So that was the reason for the request for those two modifications for appendix A. Section, Article thirteen, Article eleven, section seventeen, D. two. Change to the final, the final shall remain in effect for five years without reporting, and the applicant must report the plan and bring it up to current regulations or lose approval. All efforts should be made to prevent loss of lots or reconfiguration of the site during the review process. I do not agree with Mr. Tunnell, when he suggests that the final plans have to be recorded in two years. That is completely onerous. Actually, the way you've got it currently in your, in your ordinance, we can live with, which is, you have a final plan approval for two years, and you ask for it up to two-one-year extensions that a final plan approves. But the way, it's my understanding, the way the county operates at its day, is actually unlimited approval, and we would say, okay, well, that's probably a little too much, so let's just say it's five years. You have to record it in five years, and if you go beyond the two years, you have to make modifications that create up the current law. And the current, that current law, the goal is to minimize reconfiguration. That was the specific request there. It gives larger projects the opportunity to develop in a more coherent and financially viable way. These larger projects are not like small projects. Financing is a very, very integral part of the development process, and I may be financing a specific section of the final plan, and this last section can't be financed for five years. And that was the fundamental reason for that request.
But you said you're okay with the language you currently have?
Yes, as a fallback, we would be.
Okay.
They certainly didn't want what Mr. Tunnell said. James, okay, we'll go there. Article twelve, section twenty-eight, change, single family attached, that's basically a reiteration of a prior statement. The only, the last thing I will say is that, it's my understanding that your planning commission does not render litany of payments. Is that correct?
It's a letter of approval. It's a letter of approval.
And so it's a vote at the end of, at the end of the discussion, and it shows up in your meeting minutes.
A letter to the applicant.
Shows up in your meeting minutes, and that's approved.
Ordinarily, the process is, the meeting minutes are developed first, and usually pretty shortly after the planning commission meeting has concluded. And then the letters are based, because the secretary will listen to the proceedings and make sure that she's accurate in what the minutes state, and then what the vote actually was. And then the letters are written based on that to the applicant stating what the vote was.
But it just states what the vote was?
Yes.
Okay. So based on that, I would disagree with Mr. Tunnell, and I would suggest that, as you've got it currently written in the ordinance, that at the date of the vote approving or denying it, it stays as the standard. So...
Thirty days.
Yeah, thirty days for the guy to, so it's the trigger date. And he was talking about some written decision.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's, you know, that's in court cases, and board zoning appeals cases, more often than in the planning commission. We do the same thing when we take the vote, that's the vote, literally, it's recorded in the minutes. So, and that's all I have. I'm delighted to answer the question.
Thank you very much. I think we're on the digest.
There's a lot of information.
What we've got on our table.
And I appreciate your service.
All right. Anyone else have a, like, one last chance, and we're on close of floor?
Yeah.
Betcha, all right.
Did you have something else to ask? Peter Klein, Chesapeake City. I have a couple of process questions. So the result of tonight's meeting could be a recommendation to accept, right, as modified, the recommendation to deny, or no recommend, or a recommendation not to accept, or no recommendation at all? Is that correct?
We would make a recommendation, we won't make a recommendation.
Either for...
Yeah, it's okay. To the mayor of commissioners.
Okay. To the mayor of commissioners. And so even if you recommend against, the mayor and commissioners can say, we think it's to the city's benefit to proceed anyhow. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Even if you recommend against, and/or the mayor and the council decline to accept the language, there is still, right, the existing zoning, correct?
There is no existing zone.
Well, no, there's...
Existing, I'm sorry, just your...
There's existing zoning.
High-density residential.
High-density residential. And so in the case of a, for sake of argument, hundred-acre farm field, that's one big lot today, to build single-family homes on that, the developer has an alternative, correct, which is to come before the city for approval of a plat, and then to, I know, a plat's done at the city, county, or state level in this, say, at the town level, but plats take time, plats take money, all that stuff to the pud, because of its floating nature, is a shortcut that saves the developer money. Is that correct?
Not correct.
Okay, how am I wrong?
It makes the zoning, a mixed-use zoning, floating zone, which allows other residential use to that property, which the town negotiates with the property owner or developer, uses that could benefit the town and the surrounding region, which we're fine to find that region.
Right.
It could be Chesapeake City if they put a Ruby Tuesday's there. You're right on Chesapeake City as opposed to going, well, you just have to go to Glasgow now, or, but you could, if they put a coffee shop, I heard there's a whole lot of coffee shops in Chesapeake City. You have a gas station that's closer, they're going across the bridge, or on this side. It facilitates an opportunity to have mixed use.
So it was explained earlier that, that the underlying zoning also affected what happens within, within what becomes the floating pud. Is that correct?
Not within questionnaire.
So then, in high-density residential, are restaurants of permitted use?
No doubt.
Okay, so then if you drop a pud plan on top of high-density residential, how does a, how does a restaurant or factory all of a sudden become permitted?
Because you negotiated that in this language, and you draw the plan out, where you have certain allocations of property in chunks. You have to have a restaurant, so it is going to occupy a house, a grand chunk of area. A fifty-acre recreational field could be two hundred houses. It's not going to be two hundred houses, then it will become a negotiated valuable property of a park. Open space requirements are enhanced to increase the open space requirement.
But it sounds like a way to just avoid redoing the design.
It's, 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 gee, it's, I, it's a more, it's a unique approach to development, which catches you up to the century we live in, for lack of a better way to put it.
Oh, okay, so zoning's broken, that's last said.
Zoning is broken.
Pud, and puds are not broken, so they're this...
Puds are a new development, it's relatively new, that are continuing to grow throughout the country. I can't sit here and look nonchalant and tell you, I'm one hundred percent for a pud. I haven't seen yet. I'm talking about the language.
And it's important to note that the pud does add at least one, where you can combine two additional steps in the approval process from what is currently required.
Okay, and, and, look, I'm the first person to argue against friction as much as possible, so I understand the value in that, but on the other hand, it seems like we ought to fix what we've got, fix zoning, but nobody seems to be interested in that. We've got this new thing, which lets us shortcut the whole process, so understood. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. I'm going to close, sir, you already had an opportunity to speak, because I'm not going to...
Can I just say, bottom line is, we don't want this development.
That's your opinion. Thank you. Floor closed. We're going to take a bathroom break real quick, and I'll come back.
And then from there, to make sure that the people most affected by the flood will get something to...
Basically.
They want to...
I'm not necessarily...
Directly, but...
But they are trying to make sure...
Right. Whatever, actually, they actually go at each property owner, and they give... Somebody asked...
I don't know, right, how do they do a concept?
And they...
Just making sure you...
And so...
And so...
That's what I want to do. Because I'm just...
Wait, wait, wait. I was here...
I think that might have...
Have you got...
I don't know. I'm going to have to make sure I get it.
There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules, and they're just married. You know, there's a hot issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd showed...
You too, though.
I'm going to have to make sure I get it.
There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules, and they're just married. You know, there's a hot issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd showed...
You too, though.
You too, though.
I'm going to have to make sure I get it.
There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules, and they're just married. You know, there's a hot issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd showed...
You too, though.
You too, though.
I'm going to have to make sure I get it.
There's two different rules.
There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules, and they're just married. You know, there's a hot issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd showed...
You too, though.
You too, though.
I'm going to have to make sure I get it.
There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules, and they're just married. You know, there's a hot issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd showed...
You too, though.
You too, though.
I'm going to have to make sure I get it.
There's two different rules.
There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules, and they're just married. You know, there's a hot issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd showed...
You too, though.
You too, though.
I'm going to have to make sure I get it.
There's two different rules.
There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules, and they're just married. You know, there's a hot issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd showed...
You too, though.
You too, though.
You too, though.
I'm going to have to make sure I get it.
There's two different rules.
There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules, and they're just married. You know, there's a hot issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd showed...
You too, though.
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 I'm going to have to make sure I get it.
There's two different rules.
There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules, and they're just married. You know, there's a hot issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd showed...
You too, though.
You too, though.
You too, though.
You too, though.
There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules, and they're just married. You know, there's a hot issue right now.
And I suspect the same crowd showed...
You too, though.
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 Really?
You want to... You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules. There's a bunch of, I would look for their rules. They know this is an issue right now. And I suspect the same crowd. You take care. You too, John. There's two different rules.[600.11]
Eleven modifications C two. Modifications C two. Page Xi four.
Are we still in Article ten?
Article ten.
Oh, okay.
Are you?
What's that?
Twenty. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Article eleven, charge of eleven.
We're still, are you, what is it, eleven, sorry, I don't know.
It's eleven, I'm sorry.
The Xi, uh?
Yeah. Um.
So. Which one in there do you think? Uh, fourteen?
Eleven C two.
Just for, um, to make it a little bit more clear in C two. If we prefer read if a PUD concept plan application with modifications is, and then take out not accompanied by a, and put in is submitted subsequent to approval of, um, a PUD floating zone application. Just to make it clear that that's, that that provision applies if the concept and floating zone are not done at the same time.
It's just a little bit of a tweak in the language. So it says just a little bit about language change.
Sorry, where are you now? Section, section one.
Eleven, C two.
Two. No, two.
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 And so instead of if a PUD concept plan application with modifications is not accompanied by a PUD floating zone application, um, and then it says then after repertory in the clinic commission may give a grant, uh, deny or grant modifications, so condition. Um, instead of saying is not accompanied by a PUD floating zone, because that seems to, it could be read to say that you could apply for a concept plan without going floating zone, but really what it's meaning is if you're not applying at the same time for them, you've already got your floating zone, because that's procedurally the way it has to go, is you have to get the floating zone before you can do the concept. So instead, um, we'd suggest saying if a PUD concept plan application with modifications is submitted subsequent to the approval of the floating zone, then those would be things that you can do as to modifications. It's the same outcome, um, you have the same abilities whether they submit them together or apart, we just want to make it clear that they can do it. Either, right, they can submit it all at the same time, or they can submit it separate, but the PUD floating zone has to be done first.
And then the next was?
So nothing on eleven, A, four, five, and six.
I, I was gonna go back to, um, oh, for, where they don't need to comply with the, um, they don't have to, they, this is the MRA, um, issue related to the obligation of having to provide statement identifying the exist, existence of special conditions or circumstances, if any, that are unique to the real property and would require modification. Um, a statement identifying whether the requested modifications are, one, the result of the applicant's own actions, and or, two, based upon conditions or circumstances which are self-created or self-imposed, and, um, a statement identifying why strict enforcement of the provisions of the relevant ordinance would be contrary to the public benefit. Um, to some extent, it kind of addresses one of the comments from the, it already addresses one of the comments from the public. Um, that while they are coming in with the one through three would show the good of the modifications that they're providing. Um, it also sets forth, you know, where they're deviating from the standards and has them provide some explanation, um, as to why they're deviating, or, um, if there are any detriment to them deviating. Um, so, these are not, unlike a variance, it's not conditions you have to say line by line that they complied with them. These are things for the, so that the board has an understanding of what to consider when they are looking at the modifications. And so you're not simply considering and relying on the public to explain what their concerns are, but it would put those up front. Um, so, but the MRA's comments, um, and concerns relate to, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, they believe that that puts a burden on them similar to a variance standard, um, but I can tell you from our perspective, the purpose for us to ensure that there are some standards for you to review, since in general a variance has standards to review by. But these are not line by line things they have to satisfy, these are considerations when you guys are reviewing modifications.
We still have the ability to look at them and work them out.
Yes, I mean, if they present those and they indicate that it is, um, a result of their own actions, that doesn't disqualify them from being proof of modifications, that it might give the board a basis to say, you know, in exchange for doing these types of modifications, we'd like to see this other thing happen within the community, um, or put other conditions, um, when understanding what the standards are versus, you know, what they're asking for. Um, so that can just kind of set forth the things for the board to consider, but, um, because it's not a line by line criteria that they have to satisfy, it wouldn't affect your ability to approve it despite, um, the provisions.
We could leave it the way it is from the original draft.
On the red.
On the red, as in the first modification.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Do you everybody still believe it as, or modification? Believe it as written.
Okay, so then the next thing is, um?
We, we kind of skipped one, I think, in Article ten permissible uses. There were requests, car washes and gas, at convenience stores, and permit those stores, and green. Um, I think that's a lot of addition in my mind. Marine without any homes, it's really not a marine, and a gas station now has little car washes that are attached to it. And we're looking way down the room, we have gas stations, and, but, they can roll farms, and, and they all have little car washes they use to go through. And they're all regulated in, in design direction. So I, I, one, I for one have no problem adding section seven, permissible use of permit car washes and gas, at convenience store, and permit those stores, and green, if that happens. Would I argue that?
Yep.
All right.
Kind of putting back, of course, reminders to the, so then the architectural design standards number sixteen A, so the question is to whether it should be changed to include front and sides. And I think that you said just front and side for the, um, architectural features. It's just, can you?
Visible from the public.
From, should they continue? All sides visible from a public street.
Correct.
Um, there are proposed languages and directly abutting of public street, do you want to leave the indirectly abutting of public street?
I don't know what directly abutting means.
It's the one that's right next to the street, it would be the side, uh, it would be a front or a side door that's right against the street.
So when you say directly does both for a public street, technically depending on where you're standing on a public street, you can see the size of every property. That if the curving were added that says directly abutting of public street, it would mean that if it's a corner lot, the front is abutting, the street is all, right, but, and then the side would also.
This is, this would be helpful, this is the front of a home, fronting on the street, but this, this home also sides on the street.
Right.
So it'd be that, that home, that side, and that front, but not that side and that side.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. So then I think that we, I think to be clear, then if that's your intending, then it should say that directly abutting of public street. Because otherwise, anyone can see any side of the building from a public street.
Go back to the original, maybe those, green.
Yeah, I think there was just confusion about what that really was referencing, because I think you were using it in the normal building terminology. That just makes it a little bit clearer.
So the next, um, question was the original language under sixteen C seven?
Seven and eight.
Robert, there was a question about sixteen C five, adding stone, right?
Oh, yeah. You want to add stone? You can include stone, I love stone. And then below that, number seven, no more than four attached dwelling units in a row are permitted. The proposal is that allow a variety of size, four, five, six, um, and then just control the percentages. Um, so that you kind of break up the, the field and add more variety. Um, the proposed language is, um, of course, you're, you're missing the word no in front of more than.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, under number seven, yeah.
More than a row.
Yeah. Because when I first read that, I'm like, no, I don't think so. You forgot no more than six in a row.
Sorry, I did.
That's no problem, so.
No, it's.
Um, no more than twenty percent of the attached dwellings can be no more than six in a row, no more than twenty percent of the attached dwellings can be no more than five in a row, and the remaining dwellings can be no more than four in a row. So they're trying, four, five, and six, trying to break up the number, you know, Chip and I didn't have a problem with that.
Chip, what's the standard?
I was going to ask.
Do we have one?
I think eight is.
Eight, in our current system.
Yeah, we talked about eight at Bernie Park. Yeah, that's where we did, it had a good group, too. Yeah.
I'm all right, I mean.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's what I was looking at you guys, I was gonna say, what standard blocks?
I think they still have flexibility on that.
Take away the coat cover.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're going with no more than eight percent?
No, it's just.
No more than twenty percent?
I was gonna read is, um, no more than twenty percent can be no more than six in a row, no more than twenty percent can be no more than five in a row, and the remaining can be no more than four in a row.
Oh, here. So it's saying no more than twenty percent can be more than six in a row. So that makes sense there.
Yeah, but if you say more than six in a row, you think that could be eight in a row.
But it's saying no more than twenty percent can be more than six.
But then what's the next one about townhouses?
That will probably go in twenty, eight, C, whatever it is, and say the maximum is, is six.
I think it's actually clear with the addition of the no, six. Because I mean, that reads much, thank you for helping how I first wrote it, but I think it's actually clear in the latest, you just said.
I'm sorry, so the maximum is eight then? Or?
Six. PUD currently in town, twenty percent can be no more than six, twenty percent can be no more than five, and twenty percent can be no more than.
And that's not the case with that.
No, they.
Forty percent.
Right. Normally it's eight.
Yeah, the current standard, yeah, the current standard is that any percentage can be eight, and that's the maximum. But this would revise that so that it, in, not just the PUD, but in all zones, that would be the breakdown of how many townhomes would be in a row in a community.
No, that's just in the PUD section.
Yeah.
If this is just in the PUD section, then section twenty-eight is for all entire ordinance.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you did address that in both your.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's no more than twenty percent can be no more than six, no more than twenty percent can be no more than five, and remaining sixty percent can be no more than four.
Um, so then the next, let's see. Um, something else from, um, fourteen A.
Appendix B, appendix A.
Oh, I'm sorry, in, in Article eleven, fourteen B, under the residential requirements, there was the revision to the sixty percent.
Yeah, there you go.
Where's that?
That's in red. Is that boarding house or?
Did you guys already go on that?
That's already been.
Um, you were okay with the sixty percent, um, yeah, okay, fine, yeah, I got the impression. So under, I guess the next one, seventeen A. And we'll make the correction to the references of where it says seventeen H, where it currently says seventeen G, but the reference is seventeen H, because things have shifted, that's just take a reference off. But the last one is, um, seventeen A. Uh, appendix A, um, with the exception of sixty-four and seventy-six, which deals with grading and drainage plans and concept stormwater management at this PUD. Um.
We don't have that chart, but you're sure.
Yes.
Meet your standard.
Yeah, based on what they, did Tom, Tom agree to?
He agreed to that, right?
Right.
Okay, so. Based on what Tom said.
Yeah.
Makes logical sense that. For those in the audience who do not know, Tom is the engineer that helps the town out, he works for KCI, town engineer.
Uh, the question was, do you want to add additional language at some point in between, uh, concept and preliminary? Or at?
Because they're, because they're doing like an overall concept.
Yeah.
But the concept for the phase isn't, how the ordinance is written was that the overall concept would be approved with the understanding that we can have everything including the sixty-four and seventy-six, and then they come in for phases and do three of them. But now, it sounds like they're doing that it would be an overall concept without that, those two provisions. But at some point, there's probably a concept with those two provisions, and I think what the discussion was, was doing that per phase. So we could say, you know, so they don't have to submit that so long as they come back for a phase concept plan that has those things with that, or.
I think.
From my perspective is, when I see the concept, I know I'm probably gonna review that, the reality is, the question's always is, where is your stormwater gonna be? I don't need to know what they're gonna do, but I do probably need to know where they plan to put their stormwater, uh, and have the room for. And so from my standpoint, I don't need to see a set of plans, basically laying out everything and all the calculations, but then I do need to know that they're dealing with. Now, having said that, I could field the stormwater in this entire room for a certain area, or I can do it in this area just right here. It just costs a whole lot more just right here. So I mean, to me, it's a matter of, they, they are dictating what they're gonna do, but if they don't leave themselves enough room, it may cost them more to, to put in this. So I mean, it's behooves then to plan, is my question.
They make a suggestion during the language, as opposed to say, except for items sixty-four and seventy-six, period. However, applicant must receive concept stormwater management prior to submitting preliminary plans.
Great, so then you had the opportunity to review it.
Right, right, and ideally with a project like this, their engineers usually come and talk to us personally and say, this is what we're planning on doing with it. You know, before they spend a lot of money, they usually come talk to us and make sure they're proceeding in the right direction. That, that we would buy into what they plan to do. And we encourage that, so that they don't waste their money.
So however applicant must receive concept stormwater management approvals prior to submitting preliminary plans?
True.
Spin that in the phone.
Okay. And then? Another thing?
The appeals portion, we wanted to just mix all of them.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna strike all of, um, the appeals section twenty. Just defer back to the default, where would you go for appeals? And then there was, uh, there's a lot of, twelve. In twelve, we're eliminating PUDs from boarding houses. And we're gonna, um, change the setbacks from two hundred feet to fifty feet.
Is, is, um, is there any ground on that?
The understandard is fifty feet, for, for standard development in a, in under conventional dwelling, it's fifty feet. I'm not quite sure, it's two hundred in your reality.
And this setback applies to residential structures, it's not, um, not commercial.
It's not commercial, it's residential, it's apartments.
I mean, for, for residential structure, you aren't beating the street, or a seven.
It's, it's a lot, it's a, it's a setback, I'm not gonna walk through it in here, fifty cents a little more reasonable.
Gina, that's for a front, setback in the front?
Uh, from a right-of-way line of any public street or adjacent property lines, so all property lines and the street. They have the fifty foot around the building.
Okay, because on Article, or?
Yeah, for parks, and other multifamily residential.
Article, Article thirteen, one of the notes at the very back, I don't know if this can push or not, but on note eight, in the back of Article thirteen, it says the minimum rear yard setback shall be forty feet for C two property of butts in a residential.
But if you're building an apartment or other multifamily residential development, this criteria applies.
Will apply.
Yeah.
Okay, so you mean this, you got any part to the residential?
Yep, okay. We want to, uh, work with being that there was also twenty-eight, one, C one, which would revise the, the twenty percent, or more than twenty percent.
To be consistent with the, the language regarding the number of townhouses under the, um, supplemental use regulations. Um, we'll make sure that's consistent, so.
What section are we on right now, D?
Thirteen. So we're on, um, section, yes, we finished section twelve, and we're now on section thirteen with the density dimensional regulations. I don't know if anyone had any comments on that, I think you recall.
Do you want to have any questions about fences and sheds?
I don't, like Frank.
No, I don't.
I don't have any issues with that.
As long as there's an active HOA, I don't have a problem with it. If HOA falls, you gotta hodgepodge it, you know what? It's hard to control.
They can only control so much percent.
It's a tough for Chip.
That's true.
I mean, it's not to do that to have a certain type of fence.
Yeah.
Yeah, but of course, what they're allowed, certain types of fence, material wise, but that's how you control it, but that also have the problem, the question about television antennas, are allowed in all zoning districts?
That's an FCC.
That's it, that's an FCC.
That's, that's an FCC.
Yeah, we have no control over that.
You can't, we have the FCC.
I don't have a problem with it, but people put them in front, above their front porch, these dishes, it's like hell.
Yeah.
Especially if it's an upscale neighborhood, we're trying to get something attractive in town to get professional people to stay here. You get their kids to go to college, go back and stay, yeah?
I don't think antennas want to shoot up that.
But if I can, real quickly, there's nothing prohibiting this commission from asking applicants, give us your fence detail, and we, you know, you have to provide, I don't think you can outlaw antennas, but you can say they have to be out of public, out of public view.
Or screened somewhere.
Or screened somewhere.
Well, satellite dishes, it's kind of, I mean, where the satellite is, kind of dictates where your dish goes.
It's ready to get to reception.
And that's why with the SEC, if it's a small satellite dish, I think it's under, what is it, thirty-six inches, thirty-nine inches?
Yeah, there's a side.
We're not allowed to regulate it.
Right.
I don't think, we're not allowed to regulate it.
But you can require a screen.
Unless it's in like a historic district with strict historic, you know, regulations.
Now, those, uh, you know, those fences and those sheds, well, that's a concern, because that happens all the time, if you do something, you only have town regulations. But this PUD, that, that's something that, uh, would come up later when we have a, something before us, uh, from anyone that they develop a, you know, that they're gonna be somewhere, or better.
Yes, and how they control that.
I don't think that it's okay, that it's conducive for us to, uh, put it in something that we're all upon if we don't have any specific.
I think if you get a project of, of, over a hundred acre project for this magnitude, there's one, you have more association, it's gonna be very active and functional for a long period of time, because you have to, it's just by the nature of the beast.
I'm sorry, so. In, in, in thirteen, there's a lot of definitions about fences in thirteen. So even, even if there wasn't a definition, in terms of fences, it's very specific.
Yeah, I didn't even realize we were having that.
We'll have to have electric fences here in that. It's probably a little physical benchable and electric.
Sense.
We don't need it, we might need it, but. All right, that's.
Okay, so then, it looks like next is amendments, Article nineteen, it didn't look like there was any that disreferenced the ordinance. And then under the subdivision regulations, under basic definitions, I had to make the same correction to the low impact commercial uses, not residential. Um, and I don't think there was any comments on the article five, section seven of the subdivision regulations. Um, for, that pretty much covers our proposed discussion, I mean, our discussion and the proposed, uh, changes submitted by MRA. Were there, was there anything in the public comments, um, that you wanted to include in any of the changes here?
I mean, I, a couple, Mr. Crowley's comments, we've been, in his emails, is very to the point, uh, and reflects the code. Uh, I think we tried to, to address those couple of things as far as we could with this. Uh, I don't think we ever want to make a decision that keeps everybody a hundred percent happy. Uh, and other than a couple of the comments, it was very to the point, and, and in general was specific to what questions were. We got the same hodgepodge, and I, I couldn't keep them on track. Uh, I understand their, their feelings and their, and their interest, but just randomly downgrading a project and not wanting to listen to what the process is, it gets very frustrating. Uh, so I, I think based on what we just went through here, uh, we have, I have tried to inject what I've heard from the public comments that I thought were, were viable, uh, to the best of my ability. And I think the rest of this board is talking the same, uh, we don't, I didn't write them down specifically who said them and what they were, but I didn't make do it so, and referred back to that as we went through the amendments. So I think the public comments that I heard personally, and I think the rest of the board as well, we've had chat back and forth a little bit. Uh, and we all got highlights and stickers, and we didn't come in here blindly. Uh, we've been, been studying this, and I've been going online, looking it up, and Rick's got two models of tabs on here. Uh, I feel, given the situation that we have, that we probably, that we probably do at this point we're being, it's the very infancy stages. And I wish the wig was still here, if it had printed it. You know, just, just, just as we agree to something here, the mayor commissioners might disagree, and, or vice versa. And this is just the start of a planning process, this is not the start of a project. And I don't think that's what.
So the guidelines that we're gonna look at.
Yeah, and I don't think that's what we were hearing.
Um, the, the comment regarding the buffer yards, um, there is a section in Article eleven, um, number nine, screening and buffer yards, that says the planning commission may require a reasonable provision of screening in order to shield residential uses for non-residential and mixed-use structures within the PUD. Buffer yards are required between separate zoning districts as set forth in Article eighteen, part one buffers of the Town and Volcan Zone Ordinance. So this does say that you're. So this does say that you're going to look at buffer yards and buffering different uses.
I, I, I think one of our, our points, points of interest that we, about industrial, can we define it? And, and I, Mr. Conley, of the point, for non-residential uses that are compatible to the surrounding land use. And I think that if we can define that, it's going to help an awful lot.
The, the concept of buffers, I think, is something that lifts on me, and if you want to come further up, when we're actually presented things in a project, that's not lost upon us. I mean, I can assure you folks that, uh, to me, that's something that's very important to preserve, uh, as a whole in certain, in situations. I mean, I know, you know, and these guidelines set that out, but the fact that we're allowed to discuss that further and ask for further different things that may work out better. You know, whether it's aesthetics or it's what it prevents or deflects sound-wise and things like that. And we, you know, we use extensive review lighting plans and things like that too, to make sure that type of pollution is not coming upon, they require this stuff. So I assure you that's something in the future when we're presented with things, that that's not lost upon us in here. Things that we certainly look out for everyone in general.
I appreciate you saying that. Gina and I had some discussions about what's required by the code.
Right.
And I, I got a minute, I have to laugh when we're talking about distances of less than twenty-five feet. We got a six footer up in Burnham with a pine tree on that. I, I envision, you know, potential distribution centers that you see going down the highway, and I look at that, and I'm thinking, that wouldn't be worth anything, really. You know, but coming into things that talk about additional distances taken here in account of lighting, of noise, of the pollution that drifts over your area. Those are two things for anybody around those areas.
And to the, I think to the extent that we're able to, those things are considered in ways to mediate. And again, some of these processes, we discuss these changes, you know, things, they get, you know, the discussion of a give and take, you know? If something would be more, or make it easier, you know, what comes in turn from that too? What would a developer give us then on that end to mediate something else, you know, that's taped out or issues like that? Uh, so, again, I say that's not lost, so, and you'll see guys in there reach it.
Thank you.
All right, just a, just a one more thing, I mean, just in fairness, or just to satisfy myself, I looked through all the copies of the emails again. And every, well, except the comments from Mr. Conley are about the Southfield. We've already made it clear that that's not what we're here. So the only comments were from Mr. Conley that really addressed what we're here tonight. And I think we have gone through those and we've addressed those, so. I just want everybody to know that, you know, we have looked at all the emails and folks have said, a lot didn't hear about their thoughts, not the Southfield project. But the only one for Mr. Conley that addressed what we're here for tonight, we have discussed that.
Yes.
So with that said, um, does the board want to make a recommendation to the mayor commissioners?
I think that's why you're supposed to do this. That's your side.
I mean, there's some changes, but it's not an, an ordinary amount of changes.
Given the review we just had and the comments that we just hashed out.
Sorry.
Now, do I have a recommendation to the mayor commissioners for adoption of the new pledge language as, won't be written?
As amended.
As amended. Do I have a motion on the floor?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Keith for favorable recommendations to the mayor commissioners with all changes and amendments made as noted this evening. Do I have a second?
I'll click that.
Have a second, all in favor?
All right.
We have a roll call? May we have a roll call, please? We're not in the military, we all, we're all eye, everybody's eye.
Uh-oh, okay, usually you go name by name by name.
Yeah, we say yes or no? No, we, no.
Not in this session.
Just to draw, it was, we're all bright.
We're, we're not like the county, so that's part of their charter, so.
Thank you.
It was a no, right?
Yes, yes. And once again, this is a recommendation to the mayor commissioners, I advise highly that you get to their meeting and there'll be further conversation.
What would the, would the mayor and commissioners, would they accept what you say or?
Or deny it, or tweak your rates for other amendment. Matter of fact, I think the last time we voted no, and he said yes.
And so if, if they vote to, to not go with what you're saying, then what happens, does it come back to you folks or?
They don't come back to whatever.
They're the minds of society.
They're the minds of.
Yeah, they have the bottom.
Okay, so this is essentially a one-pass deal. You've made your comments and recommendations, now it goes to the mayor?
Yeah, for the zoning change, now what, it all.
But there's nothing prohibiting the mayor commissioners, if they see something that they don't necessarily agree with, referring it back to the planning commission, referring consideration of specific issues.
But the law's in our court.
Right, Wednesday at seven o'clock.
Next Wednesday night.
Right here.
This Wednesday. This Wednesday.
Right here.
Right here.
Day for tomorrow, be this Wednesday.
Next Wednesday night.
Did Dan Connor still live out that way?
It was Mrs. Connor.
This week. This week, Wednesday this week.
I'm sorry about that again. I have seen, I, I put the notice in all the orders.
Hold on, hold on.
We're number eighteen this week.
Do I have a no business, Gina?
Well, what about, did you vote on the amendment to the Alton zoning ordinance? You did, you.
We did that.
You voted on that. Uh, next month, I believe you have a special exception of like, coming from, next month, that's.
You're right.
A lot of that people going to town, the rack center and the brickwork at the Alliance building, the series of instructions.
And any issue with that, thousands, thousands of feet there. You all got to figure out. Is that?
That's supposed to come before the board's last day. But, yeah.
Tomorrow.
Definitely a good thing, David Black, the county's related, did nice job.
All right, yeah.